I'd like to welcome everybody out to the department heads budget meeting for the department head request for March the 12th meeting. Then remember, council have any questions before we get started?
Nope.
If not, let's move forward then. Good pleasure.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. What you have been presented to you is everybody's request and they will come before you individually. I'm going to start with the departments that are not asking for really anything at all other out of the normal. Administration will be adding the human resources and the events coordinator positions to the budget for payroll, but we aren't asking for anything else. Finance Department is not requesting anything. The governing body, to my knowledge, is not asking for anything. We will be reducing your budget because there will not be an election, but other than that, everything else will pretty much remain the same. Sunset at Sunset, we're not increasing that. You know, that's just basically the pass through. For accommodations tax, we'll be requesting several things throughout each one of the departments, but from the administration standpoint, we are only asking for some improvements to the park to be done for power and water, to be added for the parking lot where vendors parked for Sunset at Sunset and where they park for other events and adding water and power to the picnic shelter. You do have the two quotes that we've received thus far. First one, Ron Johnson has a quote of 61,259.58 and Carolina Creations, 47,105. And of course, we would be requesting the award of that contract for 47,105.
You'll be requesting what?
The Carolina Creations be awarded the contract for 47,105 as we get closer to that. I do need to speak with Tara about this to find out if we can go ahead and move forward with this because as events start happening in the park, it'll be before July. So we would like to go ahead and do this now, but I just need to talk to her to find out if we need to do a budget amendment or move money or what.
As a clarification, Lisa, is this is just for the covered picnic area? It is not for the gazebo itself or the bandstand as I call it?
The bandstand already has power. This is for the parking lot, the interior portion of where the four or five food vendors parked.
Okay, now I understand.
We're adding power and water because there was so many trip hazards in that area because of all the water pipes and electric cords that were run everywhere. Just to make it safer, we could add pedestals with the rope fence and put electric and water to each one of those spots.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
It's early in the morning and you're going very fast. So do we have estimates of what HR person is going to cost?
The league's salary survey has that position at a minimum of 61.8 to 91.2. So we are looking at putting it in at about 70.
Say that again?
The minimum on the North Carolina League of Municipalities Salary Study, the ranges are 61.8 and 91.2, minimum and maximum.
Except from the 22, 23 salary survey?
I believe so. It's the most recent.
So we're calling this a human resource personnel director? Or are we calling it a human resource personnel?
I just have it as a human resources director.
Couldn't this, couldn't this be a part-time position?
I'm not sure.
And that's, if you know off the top of your head, in the last five years, how many HR issues have come to you?
I deal with HR issues every day.
As a clarification, because I see it from an employee standpoint, every time an employee has a question about insurance coverage, 401K, kid at the dentist, there's a myriad of questions and research that needs to be done. And I see during the course of a year, there's, I was going to say hundreds, but I haven't seen hundreds myself. It's every day there seems like there's something that somebody has a question on and they run into her office, get it, get it answered. And then there's follow-up or research. I don't know that it is just, I hadn't looked at it as just a, if a employee has a complaint that they would then go to that human resources director, but I could be wrong as to what council thinks the position is supposed to entail.
Is there more to it than what Pete basically covered?
Yes. I deal with all payroll and everything payroll related.
That would be in HR?
Mm-hmm.
That would be in HR?
It would. I deal with all the work comp. I deal with all the risk management. I deal with all the insurances, as Pete said, both that are provided by the town and our I deal with all the complaints, any personnel issues.
Does the HR person have a role in the hiring process?
Yes.
Doing?
Interviews?
Doing what?
Interviews, writing the ads, writing the job descriptions, which I'm in the process of writing the HR job description and the ad right now.
For HR, payroll is part of their job?
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't that move to finance?
No, because of internal controls.
Explain that, if you would, please.
Well, finance deals with accounts receivable, accounts payable, bank reconciliation. And they, they verify payroll, so they can't be the person that does it. Just like Katie receipts all the money that comes into the town, so she can't pay the bills. Cindy pays the bills, so she can't receipt the money that comes in. Neither one of them can sign the checks. That is me and one of you all or the finance director or a combination thereof. So that's why everything has to be fragmented out because of internal controls.
You were saying that the, I was just looking, I've got the salary survey here because I printed it last night.
Okay.
Overnight.
Oh, yeah, printed all night. That's how slow it was. Quit picking on me. So according, basically, we're looking at the average, there's only like 12 persons of human resources in our population size.
Okay.
And they say the minimum's around 59.6 with the average being around 60, let's say 67 because it's 66.7979. So that would be the range, I guess, you'd be looking at because you certainly don't want to go to the max for.
And what population are you looking at?
2,500 to 4,999. That's the town population.
We're, we were probably looking at the next population range up, the 4999 up.
I dare you.
And the reason we do that is because of the seasonal.
Yeah, but then we only have to pay her that lot of money for three months at seasonal and the rest of it should go back down. I mean, what's fair is fair.
I didn't know it's going to be a her.
Or him. Well, you can't be.
And you all tell me what you want. We haven't really had this discussion because I haven't finished creating the job description.
Yeah, so right now it's a placeholder.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and you still have to finish the job description and we have to discuss and debate everything else we want going on?
Correct.
Hiring that person, does it cost anything else to our facilities increase? The HR person doesn't need a car, do they?
No.
Okay.
Administration has a car that we share amongst all the administrative employees. If anybody needs to go to a conference or a class, they need to run to the county to record something, that administration vehicle is used for that. You go to the post office every day.
It seems to me that there'd be retired HR person that's looking for part-time work, four hours a day. Do you spend one, four hours a day with HR matters?
It really depends on the day. Like if we are in our open enrollment two-week period, I spend a lot of time with HR on a daily basis.
Well, we have the, the payroll is a weekly thing.
Payroll is weekly and it takes about half a day.
Well, we'll discuss this in detail.
And if it's at the end of the month, then payroll is a lot more involved. If it's the end of the quarter, it's a lot more involved. If it's the end of the year, it's a lot more involved.
Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem question from me. Is this the appropriate time to be talking about what exactly that salary, what our population is, or is that something we're going to do in a follow-up session? If it's to be discussed now, I'd like to enter my two cents. If it's not, I'd rather wait until an appropriate time.
I think, I think we need to wait till we get things in order before we go in all this.
Well, let me ask Lisa a question. Okay, today we're getting department heads telling us what they want and, and justifying, answering questions that we have across the board. This particular one is going to be a position to be developed, so there's a reason to push What happens after we have this session and all the department heads? Are we approving, disapproving, or just hearing, hearing what they have and providing sort of guidance, whether taper it down a little bit, add more to it? And then what happens? What do we and the council see next?
The next thing you will see will be a notebook full of these Excel spreadsheets that you're given on April 8th. You will get it a week in advance of that. And then this is where we'll go through line by line.
And that'll have, that'll have the hard numbers.
That'll have the hard numbers in it. And we will have revenue projections then, we will have CPI and merit proposals, COLA proposals, we'll have all of that at the April 8th meeting.
John, just a follow-up question.
Sure.
Let's use human resources director as an example.
Yeah.
And that's going to be 50 others. Right now, if we were to say, we don't feel there's a need for a human resources director, then that would not be in our binder on April 8th. Am I correct with that? Or if we say, yes, we're in agreement that a human resources director is a position that we support, then it would be in our binder on the 8th of April.
We already said, we've already said HR is a position we want, but we haven't gotten is a full definition of what it's going to do. That's the job description that's going. Lawyer has to review that. We have to review that, discuss that. And then to Charlie's point, whether we think it can be done as a part-time or it's a full-time position.
We'll make that decision or that, we'll have that discussion as a follow-up, not today.
Well, for now, we're made aware.
Yeah.
So maybe we can move on.
Mike, what was, what was the population range that you quoted?
2,500 to 4,999.
Well, we're.
What's the next population?
Yeah.
It's 5,000 to, not, up to 10,000 is the next population.
Yeah, just, just as a point on that, we, we have been on that edge depending on who's counting. We've, we're up in that higher category anyway. We're definitely not in that lower category without, without counting the summer population.
But the float between minimum, average, maximum covers that change where someone that comes in at a lower end, when we reach that, they've already been to the minimum for the higher population. I mean, it's not like we have to pay more now just because we think we're going to be at that higher population in two years. I mean, a person can drift up there.
Well, just as a point, I think, and we'd all realize, we certainly, our town staff is not staffed at our winter population. It's staffed to be able to accommodate all of our citizens, visitors, people that pay taxes but don't live, only come here for part of the summer. So I think that we need to keep that in mind, too.
True, but I would say come back, come back with a hard figure for county or census or whatever it is as to what we should be planning on for our, for our population, I think.
Lee, I was just going to say that a human resource person, and I imagine their incremental increase in activity in a high season is minimal because she's dealing with the same staff she would be for the other 12 months.
Actually, what is, what is your summer staff person? Because we go into a lot of part-time people. What is your summer staff compared to our normals, our winter staff?
I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but it is over 100.
And.
And during the winter, it's 50 to 75.
So the one thing we need from you is a description. We need, we need a job description for this position so we can look at it, study it, decide part-time, full-time. We make decisions from there, but the first.
And I'll have that this week.
Okay, that's great to have that so we can look at it, study it, and start talking about it.
Okay.
Good. We've already added the events coordinator. So will that budget be on, based on what the salary is now?
Yes.
50,000?
Mm-hmm.
Did that have a automatic bump up at six months or is just that's a 50,000 salary?
50,000 salary.
Nothing for finance department, no government bodies we do see. Sunset at Sunset the same.
Yes.
So these are all the admin costs. Are there admin costs for, when do we get into the contracts?
We'll get into that.
We have a whole lot of admin contact, contracts for each department, actually.
That'll be in the packet for April 8th as well.
That'd be April, okay.
Yeah, all I'm doing right now is just running through the departments that are having nothing or minimal.
Are you looking for approval of this Carolina Creations apparent low bid?
No.
Okay, you're just providing this as background for us.
Mm-hmm, and we'll be bringing that to you probably at the April 1st meeting.
So all of today's about information?
Yes.
How about making decisions about information?
So, so on, just to anticipate on this Carolina Creations, what Tara's doing is looking to see if we have enough money in the budget to pay for it now and to contract it now rather than waiting until July?
Correct.
Okay. And go under the current contract.
And I just got those quotes yesterday is the reason that I don't have that hard answer for you today.
Was this put out for bids?
I'm sorry.
Was this put out for bids?
Informally, yes. And informal means that we email or call.
How many?
To get the bids.
How many vendors do you call?
Three.
And have you gotten three responses?
We've just got two.
Well, technically, that's all you need is two.
Correct.
And technically, you can do the informal. What, what changes from formal to an informal to a formal?
Cost.
It's in our manual as to what the tiers are.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't memorize that yet.
Me either.
Okay, all right.
The last department that's not asking for anything is the planning department.
They're asking for a director.
That's just got a position to fill, right?
Yes. And I'm in conversation with Wes McLeod with the Cape for Council of Government to serve as the interim in that absence. And he will be here Thursday for the planning board meeting, as will Attorney Richardson. And we'll have a discussion after that.
Meaning you and, the town and Wes will have a discussion after that as far as his filling in?
Correct. We already have a contract with the Cog that we, you know, have every year for their assistance.
It brings up a point, are we going to advertise for a planning director?
We will.
Is that after the conversation with Wes?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a separate question?
Sure.
The finance director, we advertised in two weeks and we didn't do a third week.
It was at the Beacon for two weeks. It's been on Indeed for the whole time and it's on the league website and it's on the finance website.
No, because I picked up the, I looked at the Beacon from last week and it wasn't there and I said, hmm, okay. But as long as we're doing it in other places, that's.
Yeah, we just normally run the ad in the Beacon for two weeks, but we let it go in the other places for 30 days or greater.
We're going to be ready to look at them in about a week?
Um, yes.
Okay, I'm coming back to 23rd, so right after.
Yes.
I don't have any more admin.
23rd.
I'm good. Yeah, I'm good.
Any other questions on everything I just went through quickly? Sorry.
I'm good.
All right, so with that, we'll let Matt have it.
All right. So this year for the coming up budget season, 24, 25, in the Streets Department, we have a, we currently have a Bobcat that is, it's seen its better days. We've actually been repairing it now for, the last year we spent over $12,000 in repairing this. It's a 2014. Now we're going into 2024, 25, so we're in need of a new one. We have all the attachments for it, bucket, forklift, mowerhead. We utilize it every day. So I got up with the salesman for Bobcat and roughly it's about $65,000 to $70,000 for a brand-new one. I'm with a state contract and he did say that he would trade ours in, so that could range from $10,000 to $20,000 trade-in. So at the end of the day, we could be looking at a brand-new machine for less than $50,000.
Said we've spent 12 grand in the last year on maintenance and repair?
Yes, sir.
You don't happen to know what it was the year before, do you?
I would say, I know Dustin had gotten some fuel injectors in there that were like five or 6,000 dollars. It's, it's just, it's just getting more and the, and the warranty's gone on it, so brand-new machine, new warranty.
You said the word, he's ran out?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's what we're asking for in the Streets Department this year. Any questions as to that? All right. Beach erosion, they're working on the eight walkways now this year. Next year, we're looking to hopefully do three of them. This is a picture of Seventh Street right now. You can see how the dunes are going into it. Just covers up every day. Boards are starting to get more rotten and breaking off every day, nails and everything. So to get up and over top of the dunes, it just is great for us, great for the citizens.
Matt, a question on this, we're looking at a bunch of sand that's there in the, closer to be in the foreground. Doesn't Cam have stipulations that once you get so much sand, you can't remove it?
Yes.
It has to stay?
Yes.
Because that looks like that's quite a bit of sand there.
I think it's like a foot.
Well, we put the board, the plywood, the vertical plywood at the beach side, that's to keep the sand from coming in and overtaking the.
Tries, yeah. That's the goal. Yes, sir.
Okay. So these are combination low and vulnerable to the sand plus they're, I would assume falling apart?
Yes, they are. They are. We've actually spent the past few months on different walkways, repairing them, placing boards, things like that, that we need to do in-house for this upcoming season. That way, it's safe for all the citizens and tourists.
Matthew, with this, this picture's worth more than a thousand words because what it shows is here that where you put the boards to stop the sand from coming in, obviously that's where sand has accrued on, more, more sand. Your next walkway has to go over that.
Yes, sir.
And that makes them more expensive, obviously, and every time more expensive because you have to build up and over all these dunes we can't cut through.
And then you can see the, how tall this is.
Yes.
And just remember, it's got to be 18 inches above that.
Yes. It's amazing, it's a great picture to show that to anybody. If there's any questions about what we're up against with our, with our walkways as we repair them.
Well, and also, that just makes a really problematic approach down into the beach level because 18 inches above that existing grade of the sand, that's going to be a heck of a set of stairs.
So, so we are doing all of them that we replaced now to be ADA viewing compliant. So it'll be ramped all the way up. There will be a viewing partner at the top and then there'll be a whole bunch of stop, steps to take them down.
Correct.
And so the ADA stops at the viewing platform.
That's it.
And this comes out of the beach erosion fund?
That's it.
And we're hoping that there'll be enough money in that to do these three. We'll be able to give you a better idea of that on April 8th as well.
Thank you, Matthew. This picture is fantastic.
Moving right along into Stormwater. I put this spreadsheet together and I was asked briefly before this meeting about just a overview of where we're at with the capital improvement plan for Stormwater. I actually have a running tab of all the projects. There were 46 projects, I believe, when this was incorporated in 2017. Out of those 46, we've taken care of about 36, 37 of them. We're in year seven now. And these next three that I have on here, Fourth to Sixth Street, Gredo Circle, 1605, 1601, that'll put out three more. So we're getting close to that 40 range. A few other ones on that project, Mr. Hargraves. Since we've received our back truck and our camera truck in 2018, we've been able to clear a lot of these out and go through the, go through the pipe and they don't need any work. They were completely full when this plan was incorporated. But since we've been able to get that machine and clear these out, there's no need to actually take the money and fix something that doesn't need to be fixed right now.
Well, that was a good investment, huh?
Yes, it was a great investment.
So, so none of these are in that category?
No, those are not in that category. These, these need to be done. They've been on the waiting list for years now, especially Fourth through Sixth Street. We've been trying to get this done for, I guess, a year now.
Is that the one that has easement issues with, with property owners and things?
It will be abandoning the pipe that is behind the second row homes and bringing it to Main Street. So we're working on a encroachment agreement with DOT and it'll go down to Sixth Street and turn and then go to Canal.
Okay, so, so the ones that we put in will all be on DOT or town right-of-ways, not, no longer going through private property and having to deal with that?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have to fill or do anything with the pipes that are going through private property now?
They will need to be filled with global fill concrete.
Matt, are there any, I think I know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway. 46 projects, that was in 2017 terms when McGill, was it McGill? Put together that whole multimillion-dollar Stormwater plan. I'm sure there's been additional locations that have shown their ugly face as those 46 were being worked on.
Right.
Am I correct in assuming that the way those are paid for is by budget amendments that come before town council when those new projects are in fact identified? Or does that still come out of the stormwater budget? Being replaced by uh the very good news you just gave us about the back truck being, and the camera being able to uh identify clogs in pipes, uh, go in and clean them out, and then, hey, we don't have to replace the pipe now. We save money there. How do we balance that savings versus the new unidentified stuff that pops up?
So what I've, in the past few years, when I've come to budget for different stormwater projects, yes, I've put it in here as, hey, this is on the plan, year five, six, seven. Um, if something does rear its head that is more urgent, um, then we can look at the projects that we proposed and say, okay, this is, you know, this could possibly lose a fire truck, police car, something like that, as opposed to this, this is on year five, but it's just because it was on the plan.
So you, you move it then?
We can move it, yes, we have moved it.
But the overall plan is gonna cost more money than it originally, probably, that it originally was, was financed for uh back in two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
So is it budget amendments that come before town council that help supplement that to be able to pay for it?
It wasn't uh budgeted in eighteen as one big chunk, it was broken down into years.
Ten years, yes.
Yeah, and we put in money every year.
We put the money in every year for what he anticipates we're gonna be able to do.
Okay.
And fourth through sixth has actually been budgeted two or three times now.
And, and kind of relocated or repositioned?
Well, the engineering um took a while, and all the.
And all of that ended up costing more than it was originally budgeted for anyway.
Right.
Alright, answers my question.
So, so the follow-up question, uh, at what point is it time for us to do a follow-on stormwater study to uh, you know?
Yes, we just talked about that this morning.
Do the next evaluation.
I've, I've looked around, Lisa's asked me um, months ago to look around at different projects around town. Um, I personally don't see a need in hiring a firm to come up with a plan for just a handful of projects right now. Um, we see them, there's actually a couple on this, on this proposal now that aren't on our plan, but they're, they're becoming a bigger issue. Um, but around town, Sea Trail, Oyster Point, things like that, I don't see a need personally, it's up to you all of spending the money to get a firm to make a new plan that costs, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, or however much it was.
Do we whatever, show of hands?
Well, well, let me just, to, to change that a bit.
Okay.
What I hear you saying is that the town has gotten over the hump in our stormwater problem backlog, and you can kind of handle things as they come along? Is that accurate?
It's very accurate, okay, sir.
Yeah, I would, I would second that, in a little knowledge I have regarding stormwater, once you catch up, you're gonna have things happening all the time, it's not gonna be a time where you say it's done, ever.
Right.
And so new ones will come up, you'll put them in priority, do them the next year, do them that year, whatever it takes, but you might have to change around a little bit, give and take here, the flexibility of your plan you have here. But I think you have done a good job working on this, and uh, and, and when you just were stormwater person, now you're a little more than that. But uh, I think it'll work very well in the future, I really do.
Lisa, I think, well, we put money in the stormwater fund every year, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is are we gonna keep doing that so the fund is built up if we come across a big issue? I mean, it was put off for twenty years.
It's uh, stormwater is not its own fund, it comes from general fund, and it just has a department that we fund every year during budget for the projects that he anticipates doing, and then we always put extra for the unknowns that show up during the year. And then if something major happens, then we would come to you for a budget amendment.
It, we kind of straightlined it, I think, when we estimated the ten-year plan, and we said it was gonna be, whatever the amount of money was, uh, I don't know, five million dollars, whatever.
One point two or something like that, actually.
We're gonna allocate a certain amount of money each year, have we pretty much stayed on schedule with that?
I believe so, I mean, obviously over the years, prices are going up and everything. So the prices have changed a little bit, thankfully, some of the contractors that we've been able to use have been cheaper than what was expected or was originally um talked about in that plan, so that's helped us out. I think, I mean, we're probably a little bit over, um, but I don't think it's that much, I don't think we've gone crazy with it. It's been on par for the most part.
Well, I would, I would like to say that, once we got the stormwater plan rolling, it's going, I think it's going very well. So thank you, Matt and Dustin.
Good, okay, anybody else?
Um, the last thing I have is, you all have seen them, the Big Bellies on the island, in the park, down at the birdwatch. Um, they're all, the ones on the island are at least ten years old, the ones in the park are eight or so years old. Um, a lot of parts go into them, batteries, sensory boards, things like that. Um, and with the salt air, they're just starting to deteriorate quicker than I guess we expected. Um, so I have a couple of quotes that I got for replacing all new, there's twenty-two of them around the town, eleven recycled, eleven trash cans. Um, I have different quotes in here as far as, like I said, the brand-new one, a five-year maintenance plan, and a quote for repairing the existing ones. Um, I also have a guy named Heath MacArthur who's with Big Belly. Um, that would be more than happy to come and talk to you all more about it, I can answer questions about it for sure, but he can go more in-depth with it.
He's with who?
Big Belly.
Oh, Big Belly, okay.
Okay, yeah. Um, and he's available to come in whenever, if you all would like to talk to him, like I said, I can answer questions if you have anything, um, for the most part, but.
Matt, what, who, uh, who empties these? Us?
We do, our department.
Uh, have you found that what's put in the different containers to be correct?
No.
I think that.
That's a hard no, actually. I mean, recycling, there's, I don't need to get into it, but it's not all recycled. And we can't, it's contaminated at that point, so we can't just put it in recycling.
Virtually, it goes in a dumpster, doesn't it?
It becomes all trash, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the, the question is, you've got twenty-two of those, and eleven of them are recycled each time, and each time you go through and, and dump them, do you have a rough idea how many of those are actually usable recycle?
Honestly, during the beach season, it's a little bit better, the tourists, I'm gonna just say the tourists, I know citizens use them as well, but tourists actually do a fairly well job of, of putting the right recycling content in there.
That's cause they're used to recycling.
Right. Um, we empty them every day, seven days a week. I couldn't give you a.
I'm getting at, is it worth uh, is it worth having these out there as recycling cans too, if
they're not recycled?
If they're not being recycled, if we have to throw them all away?
Does it cost us anymore to differentiate?
Believe so, no, I mean, they all, the only difference is that there's doors that open up, one's got a recycling.
Yes.
Uh, stamp on it, and one's had a trash can.
Just as a point, I think, I think John is making an excellent point here, should we just go to all regular trash? But as a uh, as an optimist, I think we at least need to send the signal that there is an opportunity to recycle rather than just give up on, give up the ghost and, and revert back twenty years.
It, it supports our green community ambitions.
Right.
You know, even though there's, there's an education process, so I can't read these, sorry.
Yeah, you want me to tell you what they are?
What, what's the difference in cost between twenty-two new, new ones with a five-year maintenance or repairing them all?
Okay, so the twenty-two new Big Bellies, eleven recycling, eleven trash, it's uh, it comes out to a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
A year?
Altogether.
A ye- a year?
No.
A one-time.
We buy them, we empty the trash, if there's a problem with them, we can order the parts, and we replace everything, we, they're ours at that point.
And that includes the five-year maintenance, or the five-year maintenance is a separate package?
It's a separate package, yeah. So the five-year maintenance is the next sheet. Um, total monthly cost is about twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars a month. What they do is we um, we essentially, we lease them, um, they come out, if there's a major issue, they'll, Big Belly will come out, send a crew and, and fix whatever's wrong, battery, sensor, um, ram board, things like that.
Is there a length of time on that uh contract?
Sixty months, five years.
Okay, so it's a five-year, so it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and we own them, go away, Big Belly. It's twenty-six hundred dollars a month for five years, and we just have to empty them, we'll service them.
Problem, I, I shouldn't say problem. Um, we did talk with Heath about this with Big Belly, and if it's a small issue, what they'll do is they'll mail us, there's sensors like in, there's a whole bunch of sensors and boards and things like that, if it's a small issue, they'll, they'll mail us a sensor, we'll put it in. So we're still paying them to send us and us to do it, you know what I mean? They're not completely doing everything with it, every time there's a call, yeah.
But there's still a cost, that five-year maintenance, twenty-five hundred a month, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
So we're talking about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for twenty-two garbage cans?
For the first year.
And then it's a hundred and fifty a year after that, right?
I don't make up numbers.
Let me, let me ask a question, Big Belly has nice lights on it, does, when it gets full, does it ring your cell phone to say that this one is full?
Actually, we do, Dustin and I both have, and um, a couple of our crew have apps that are on our phones, we can check them every day. This one's full, it's, it's, or there's a problem, maintenance issue, air, things like that.
But the difference between a Big Belly and a, a, a trash container is the electronics and the, the notification?
There's also, there's, I mean, there's a ram, it compacts everything.
Okay.
As it, as trash goes.
And that's huge.
It, it does.
That's huge, that's, cause otherwise it would fill up in fifteen minutes.
Right.
If you didn't, if it wasn't a trash compactor, it would fill up.
Right. I mean, it, it does, it does a great job um when they're working correctly.
So, are we, Matt, are we doing all the maintenance now to these things?
We are.
So we're doing all the maintenance, so what we do is we.
We order the parts, we get the parts, we put them in.
Yeah, that's what you do now.
That's what we do now.
But you're saying there's a problem with getting parts now because some, some things are outdated, changed?
They, yeah, so, like I said, we got these ten, eight to ten years ago. Um, and Heath told us that as we move forward, these parts will be discontinued, so we're gonna be standing still anyway.
Yeah, we've had that problem with other departments, other equipment that, that happens.
Let me get this straight, we're gonna pay, we're looking to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars for new containers, and then an additional twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars to maintain them every month, no?
Different plan.
Okay, one's at least, one's technically at least planned, one's a purchase.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, so how do we do, can we manage just replacing the twenty-two for a hundred and forty thousand dollars without a five-year maintenance plan? That's what we're on now, right?
Yeah, we can.
And that's within your workload, your staffing, your technical capabilities?
Where, where does this come from? I would suspect that, and I hate to, cause I'm not an accommodations tax excuse, I think it's penny wise, unfoolish. Um, is this accommodations tax?
I, I believe so.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Slap my face.
What, what's your recommendation? What do you think we should do? Moving forward, you wanna think about it?
How bad a shape are the trash cans in theirself, the outside, they're not.
They're not in bad shape.
They, they look.
And the parts, I, I just looked at this third page, so the parts that you're actually asking for here, I think it says eight, some of them's four or whatever.
Right.
Seven thousand dollars.
So that's, that's.
And every part right now is still available to make these things work, correct?
Currently, yes.
Well, hell, we oughta just buy a bunch of parts up, a whole lot cheaper than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But unless, you know, the things, if, if they're rotten out and they've gotta be replaced, I understand that. There's a lot of damn difference there, a lot of difference.
And do we have to buy the Big Bellies all at once? Or can if we get two of them go bad, we just buy two new ones?
So you want like a replacement?
Complemented, complemented by maybe a stash of parts, can they tell us which parts they're gonna take out of service?
Like, yeah, I'm sure they could.
Well, I'm sure Matt knows what parts are the most frequent that become a problem too.
You can buy, stock those up and use them as cans go down.
I mean, yeah, it would definitely be a cheaper route.
But I see this as just a breakdown of four, eight, or whatever, but, but the difference, it's just a major difference.
Right, and he never told me when these parts will go out, he just said that they are phasing out of them, so.
Yeah.
It could be a year, it could be four years, I don't know.
Maybe you could sit, sit down with him then, and go through where we're rooting parts, when we're gonna lose parts, all that kind of stuff, and, and do just like the mayor said, a great idea, stock them up, and then if we get three or four or five more years doing that, that's fantastic, cause I, I think anyway, the canisters from the outside.
Well, and, and they're closed in, so it's, it's great because, you know, if it does ice down here, no ice gets in there, the water that is very minimal, if anything, gets in there, bags aren't full, you know, floating and things like, I mean, it's, they're covered, which is great. Um, so I, I mean.
So how about coming back to us with a spare parts plan, a estimated, you know, replacement for, for several of them?
Well, even if you had to buy twenty-two.
Yeah.
If you had about twenty-two boards and twenty, where you could replace everything, come back with something like that and give us a different number just to look at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Kick the can down the road for two, three more years, four more years. You know, the things, really, and we moved here over twenty years ago from Fairfax City, Virginia, and Fairfax City was the number-one recycler in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And when I first got on the council, I asked Susan Parker about mandatory recycling, and the trouble is, people just won't do it. We've got a environmental resource committee that looked into that. If you, if, if you can't recycle what's in these recycling cans, I mean, you give the appearance of we're trying to recycle, but, and if it's better in the summer, then it's local people that are.
Right.
I, I don't know, people will be throwing their recyclables in my yard, but sometime, hopefully in the near future, we're gonna have to look at mandatory recycling. Just look up.
Yeah. It's your decision though, not mine.
Yeah, but I mean, you can also look right now at the rate of which property on these owners sign up for the recycling, and, and there's a large portion of our population that does not bother to sign up for recycling and, and, and do that.
But a small portion of those people drive down to nine oh four.
Yeah.
And drop their stuff off there.
It's, the key word there is small, small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you have your, you have your homework.
And you'll never have mandatory recycling on the beach.
Is that it? Is that it? That's all you want?
Like you. Not asking for a lot necessarily, it's pretty easy to please.
So uh, how, how big is your department now? How many people do you have?
DPW Stormwater, what's your staff?
Six full-time, that's including uh Vicki, our administrative assistant, and then two part-time.
Is that stormwater and DPW?
Uh, yes, sir, they're all together. Um, our one part-time is the roll cart attendant, but he does come in a couple of days a week to help us out with any other tasks that we have.
He shovels walkways and stuff like that?
We need a lot, yeah. So, yeah, two part-time and, let's say, five, six, six full-time, not including me.
Well, you should count, you're part of the team.
Plus a director.
Okay. So, seven, seven altogether.
And you're getting?
You can use both hands to.
Nine, it's nine altogether, two part-time, seven full-time.
Okay. Nine, oh, yes, okay.
Okay.
And you're okay with that? Everything's good? As far as you're concerned?
They're, they're great.
Thank you then. Thank you very much.
Do a great job.
Go back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Where are we now?
We do inspections next.
Well, that was the pickup truck.
Just, that's the only thing, uh, problem, looking to, uh, replace.
And to bring everybody, um, up to speed, General Assembly a couple of years ago made it so that, um, the building inspection department revenue that comes into that department through fees has to be spent in that department. Period.
Does that cover salaries too?
Hundred percent.
E- equipment and salaries?
Yes, sir.
Carrie, uh, at a, oh, it's been months ago now, at a town council meeting, I remember, at least I think I remember, town council authorized you to hire another building inspector. Has that been done?
We did, and then we also lost one, uh, to the county.
Okay, see.
I've got a vacancy now and, uh, will soon look, fill it a little later on. Uh, just hadn't, right now, been pressured enough too, because there's been a, a somewhat of a decline in our, uh, in our permitting overall, uh, far as new construction.
You mean the slope of the curve is a little flatter? It's still, it's still going up, I can guarantee.
But it's still gonna go up?
It's gonna eventually go up.
So, you ha- have you started to get new inspections from all of the units approved for, uh, the, the C-trail?
Riptide.
The riptide, the riptide, uh, conditional zoning?
Birdwatch? No, sir.
Well, Birdwatch we already did, but I mean, there is.
No, no, uh, Sawmill is, is finished completely. That's a hundred percent.
Yeah, Gull's Landing's gonna start picking up.
Yeah, but Gull's Landing was previous to the, uh, the conditional zoning.
Yes.
True.
True. And the conditional zoning had a large number of units.
Right, and the only thing that we are, uh, in the process of permitting now is basically, uh, everything dealing with, uh, C-trail, the actual restaurant, uh, in those commercial buildings.
Yeah. That's right.
Those are the only things. Nothing residential-wise.
But we still do the ETJs, so in the sanctuary, you, you've
We do.
Got a fairly steady flow and along Seas- uh, Seaside Boulevard, we've got some continuing
Yes.
Development there.
Yes.
But that's state manageable.
Process than what it was before.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's not, you know, before, you know, we would see, uh, two to three, uh, submittals, uh, a week. Sometimes maybe five or six, uh, so that, that's, has been slowly declining. But I'm sure eventually it's gonna pick, it's gonna, as things start selling more, it's gonna pick back up.
So, right now, your staff is handling it okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. Now.
So.
So, explain that.
Okay, so, as far as the, uh, uh, as far as the, uh, uh, replacing, uh, well, I know we'd normally are on a, uh, our roll-up plan. Uh, it's normally seven years, uh, so, uh, but I was actually, uh, speaking, speaking with Lisa and we were, uh, talking, uh, some time ago about fire department needing a vehicle. And, uh, so I had mentioned to her, I said, you know, I'm, I'm close on this particular vehicle right here. And so, it, the truck's in excellent condition. I thought maybe, uh, maybe do a lateral move and slide it over, uh, to them instead of it going out to the auction, because it is such a, uh, the truck is in, in excellent condition. And so, uh, and looking at that, uh, was trying to, uh, go to a, a, a crew cab for one of our vehicles at least, uh, because the other ones, uh, those supergowns are a little bit small. And so, that's the only reason I bumped up to the actual crew cab and that's for, uh, act- actually, if we all needed to go, it's kinda hard, you know, for us in, uh, three people or four people, as far as, uh, going to classes or any type of things that we need to go and look at together. Um, obviously, the, uh, I've got one cost under state contract, I think you've got it there, uh, will you see the price there in it? Uh, I've actually, uh, requested two others, but I just hadn't received them yet. Uh, they're kind of, uh, I said, I checked again, I hadn't seen anything yet, so I got a feeling it's probably gonna be within somewhere in this range, so that's, that number I plugged in there is one I've actually received.
Yeah.
That's the fifty thousand, six hundred?
Yes, sir.
Chief Childress. Passing the truck down to the fire.
Yeah, go ahead, who has the question?
Chief, is this, you happy with this?
Yes.
All right.
And I've got it in my presentation.
Okay, and this will meet your needs?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. Now, the money for this comes from his fees?
Mm-hmm.
Which must be spent
In his department.
Do we have to do anything? There's a value to that vehicle, eighteen thousand dollars roughly.
So, already depreciated out.
Okay, so we don't have to reimburse money back into the plan because you're giving up something good?
Yes, sir.
Fully depreciated.
Checked into that, just to make sure.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's, it's, like I said, it has low miles and it's a fairly new vehicle, but it has depreciated out, so it can, it can move to a department without uh, any, any issues, any problems.
Is it four-wheel drive?
It is four-wheel drive.
Awesome.
Wow, that's great. That's great.
So, you have our, just kinda wrapping up, the manpower in your department is how many?
Uh, it's, uh, four.
Including you?
Yes.
Including you, including Cindy? So, one, two, three inspectors and one admin support?
Yes, sir.
And we call this the building inspections department. We don't, it's not part of the planning department.
We separated it out a few years back, whenever the budget separated out and kept it totally, uh, stated, just to make that separation.
Sure.
Okay. When you talk. We, we need to do that on a website then too.
And some of Katie's salary comes out of the building inspection department, as she's the Kama LPO, local permitting officer, and she does, um, trade?
Permit trades.
Trade permits.
Change outs, permits.
So, the three employee, you're one of the three employees?
Yes, sir.
You're not counting her, Katie?
I didn't count her in the four, but yes, she, she, her salary is part of it, is, is full of our, our budget.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good to me.
You have a deal.
Sir?
You have a deal.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Yes.
You're good.
Thanks, sir. You can go back.
Thank you all.
And with, um, with Dustin's new positions, we will be creating the code enforcement slash project manager department.
Have we had something? Now, yes.
No, you don't.
No.
So, you're gonna create that department?
Right, we're gonna create that department.
So, so now all our department heads are exempt employees, so the department head, that'll be in exempt positions?
Yes.
Yes.
And could you explain what exempt means?
That means that it doesn't matter how many hours we have to work as long as we get the job done. And anything over forty is a, uh, it's flex time and it's one for one.
And what is that, what can the flex time be used for?
Uh, uh, personal days, sick days, vacation days.
Can't be converted into cash though?
No, it cannot.
Whatever you gain at the end of the year, you gotta use it or you lose it.
So, nobody's here between Christmas and New Year, right?
Uh, whatever you gain during the year, you have to use it. If not, at the end of the year, you lose it.
Then roll over.
No, they don't roll over.
Okay.
And we're calling this code enforcement?
Yes.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement and project manager. And you all know all the projects that we've got currently going on. Um, I didn't bring my list with me, but we talked about them briefly. The walkways, dredging, Majestic Oak, Twin Lakes.
Property behind Station Two.
Property behind Station Two, um.
The parking lot in front of the park.
Parking.
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 Parking lot.
And the park. Yep.
Town hall renovation.
What if you?
That's enough.
So, you'd be ma- as an example, you'd be managing this, uh, work to be contemplated at the park for the water lines and electrical hookups for, uh, food trucks and other people that would use it, as, as an example?
Yes.
This is the code enforcement officer? That would be?
Slash project.
Yeah.
You also work directly with our consultant, not a consultant, our subcontractor that, uh, takes care of the administration end of dilapidated structures, uh, you know, all of that kinda stuff?
Yes, I work with John Ganes. Yes.
Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
I know, uh, Dustin sends out notices to people who need to correct a problem. Is it possible to get a list of those with our weekly report?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. I can buy that, too.
That's a good idea, Charlie.
Yes.
Always have to go to Dustin and say, Dustin, how's this doing? I mean, I, it's a process. It's not gonna be done overnight, but.
Yeah. Let me put it in. Will we send a letter? I'll send a letter to, I'll let you know. Yes.
Now, these enforcements, they're, they're primarily the, uh, UDO codes, building codes?
Down ordinance.
Pardon?
And also down ordinance.
And municipalities.
Yes.
So, so a violation of the municipal code, does it still take that multiple-month period to take care of that? Or is the municipal codes, code something that if they don't take care of it right away, you can reach out to the police department, come give them a citation? Or do you give the citations?
Well, I can give them a citation, want to, um, but I mostly send them a letter, give them thirty days. Who will provide, but if not, if I try to, I send another letter, then I send it certified to see if it does get to them. And if they, they sign for it, then I know, and if they don't, then we'll see about issuing them or find.
Okay, so somebody takes and dumps all kinds of used furniture and things in the, in the right of way or on the road? You give them a thirty-day letter or?
Yeah.
Do you give them a cite day, citation right then?
Well, I give them thirty days to correct and to make them aware of the, um, ordinance, like I also send a, that along with the letter to them, stating that, that this is not allowed, and most of the time is done, last letters I've been sent out, they've been removed in the past week. After I send a letter out.
It seems like some of those things should be done now, almost immediately. Um, I mean, that, that's if it's, if it's legal to do that. And so, and so how do you get? How do you get the information that tells you there's a code violation that needs enforcing?
Sometime I get complaints, but also ride. I basically almost ride, I try to ride daily through the town and look for myself to see if anything's not tied up, just like the vacuum cleaner I was out there by the road, table and stuff, I was out riding and I saw. And I sent a letter to it.
Okay. So, my answer is why not call the owner and say, hey, move that thing out of there or tomorrow I'm gonna give you a citation?
Uh, which is good, but I don't have their phone numbers. We don't have a record of phone numbers of all the property owners.
Or emails.
Or emails. So, the only way I have is a letter, unless they, I can research and see if they done a recycle. If they done a recycle program, I can pull through it.
Yeah, okay. And if they're here. A lot of stuff sits there for a long time that shouldn't be, shouldn't be doing that.
And if they're here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can
Yeah.
And I've done that.
Stop in and ask them to remove.
So, the key thing is, is if people see something to notify the town that there's, what they think is a code violation.
To notify Dustin.
And you can do that through the Text My Gov?
Yeah.
Is that that little box? The new box that's on the website?
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Who gets that?
Vicki. And Public Works.
They're the only ones who get the Text My Gov?
Mm-hmm. And she gets it because she maintains the work order system that Dustin and, and Public Works and they all work off of.
Thank you.
You're good.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
And then public buildings is where we put the two-hundred thousand for engineering and consulting and that, uh, and we'll just keep that amount there for this year.
In public buildings.
Public buildings.
So, that's, that's not a new appropriation for the next fiscal year, that's presently there right now?
It's there now and we'll put it there for the new budget.
So, we just haven't used all of that that was allocated for the present fiscal year we're in now?
Right, right. There's about seventy thousand, between seventy and eighty thousand in there now.
Least again, what do you get for now, again?
It's for all the engineering and the consulting of all the projects that are going on.
Okay.
But it goes into buildings, you said?
Yes, it's in the public buildings department.
Which is?
Public infrastructure.
Okay. So, what, what department does that fall under?
Yeah.
Public buildings.
Who's the head of public buildings?
Uh, Dustin. Dustin takes care of all town-owned facilities.
When, when we put out an engineering request, I'll use in, as, as an example, the, uh, DPW EOC new area that we're talking about out by Station Two, out on Georgetown, off of Georgetown Road. Do we go out for bids on that? Uh, I know there's a fairly elaborate, elaborate preliminary plan that you've presented to us showing all the wetlands and some fuel, uh, refueling stations, things like that. Do things like that go out for public bid or do we typically, I know we have McGill, I don't wanna say on retainer, but they, they know a lot.
Contract with McGill to do all of that upfront work for us.
Is it time and materials? Is it by the hour for different categories of, uh, disciplines?
Some of it is by the scope of work, some of it's by the hour. It just depends on what they're doing.
And how often is that contract, uh, up for renewal or review?
I think this is the second year that we've been with McGill. Um, and then when we get to construction, of course, that goes out for, for bid.
Sure, I understand that. I'm just talking about the before things, when we really don't have a scope yet. They're the ones that develop the scope so we can go into the public bid.
Correct.
And, and you said the second year, but is that a one-year contract that we do with them or?
I'd have to pull it to make sure, but I think it is. That's just an automatic renewal.
Okay.
All right. Fire?
Put that microphone closer to you there.
All right, so my first, uh, request is
That's good.
It's good. Uh, the hiring of three full-time firefighters. We, we've seen significant growth, you know, over the past few years. We've got a lot of projects, uh, going out through town. Uh, population increasing, uh, permanent residents, uh, so I'm requesting three full-time firefighters. That's gonna be a cost uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. So, one of the most significant reasons why is, uh, so currently, there's three firefighters assigned to each fire station. So, uh, due to vacation, sick leave, injury, things like that, uh, you know, we have part-time firefighters that fill those vacancies. So, our overall goal, staffing-wise, is to keep three firefighters on duty twenty-four-seven at each station. At times, we're not able to do that, which leaves two firefighters at Station Two. Uh, that's not a good practice. I wanna try to avoid that. That's That's not a good practice. I wanna try to avoid that. That's the whole goal of this project is to not allow two firefighters on a fire engine. The additional three firefighters would put one firefighter per shift. Um and that would eliminate the two firefighters per station. So uh at full staffing with with this project funded at full staffing, we would have four firefighters assigned to Station One and three assigned to Station Two. If someone's out for sick leave, vacation, the Station One firefighter would be bumped to Station Two to keep minimum staffing of three. So that's the overall goal um to eliminate two firefighters per.
And that's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the three?
Two thirty-four, yes.
Does that include uh is that just salary and benefits or?
Salary benefits.
That's not turnout gear or?
Not turnout gear and things like that. All attempts would be made to cover the turnout gear and uniform expenses out of our current budget. I think we can do that.
Um so can you talk a bit about why we need these? I mean, you you talked about filling out shifts and that. How is the mission increasing? What if our our responsibilities increasing? Uh the 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 problem with the current manning, why it's not sufficient?
So so um our fire district, as you know, the fire district, you know, encompasses areas that's not just within the town limits. We cover a lot of the E T J within the town and then we have a fire district that's considered uh unincorporated county areas, which, you know, we've got a portion of Ocean Ridge, um Sunset Village, uh you know, a major development that's going on right now behind Station Two is Chatham Glen. Uh I've got a number somewhere in there, a hundred and thirty-six homes. Next to Chatham Glen is a uh heart ease, a part of Chatham Glen that's coming along, another hundred and something units. Don't quote me on that, but around there. Um so that's the number one. We're seeing a lot of development. A lot of people moved to this area. The the increasing of the severity of the calls are coming along, increasing a little bit of increasing of traffic. The severity of our motor vehicle collisions are are on the rise. So we need to continue and be proactive with our staffing to be proactive with the staffing of the fire apparatus. Going back to the previous topic of the of the staffing of the internal, so back to the two personnel per per rig. So if we're at full staff and we've we've got three, we're three and three, we're covered there. But we do have to accommodate for the vacation time, the sick leave injury, as I said. If we've got a part-time firefighter that can fill those voids, which we have a great roster of part-time firefighters, they fill a lot of voids for us. But we've still have a lot of days that are at minimum staffing, which currently a minimum staffing is when we're, that's as short as we go. So three firefighters at Station One, two firefighters at Station Two. We cannot fall, it's our policy, we cannot fall below that. So if we ever get in a a situation where we're falling below that, one of the Deputy Chief and I, we're gonna be on that truck to make that never go below five.
Chief, is it correct to assume or correct to state that salaries? Uh I know it's not fixed plan. It's not like new fire engines or the building itself is paid for by fire fees. And um
And by law, it's required. Fire fees are required to be spent in the fire department.
Right. But if if we spend more money than the fire fees will support, then it comes out of ad verum taxes.
Yeah. So so the question is, how much does this go? Can our fire fees support this raise?
That's that was where I was going.
Okay, sorry.
That's the key.
That's definitely not. The fire fees can't support this entirety entirely. A large chunk of this would be covered under fire fees. We don't have an exact figure of what that would do to from the town side of things, how much that's gonna be. I don't have that yet. But we definitely wouldn't support all of that.
I'm sorry. What would it take to get that for us? What percentage is covered by fire fees? What is not?
I don't have that figured out.
We'll have it for the April eighth meeting.
Okay.
We're waiting on the projections to come from the county.
Okay.
What what do we pay? What about volunteers? Pay them by the hour or?
So we we consider our volunteers as as what's called paid paid on call. So they respond back to, say, fire alarm, structure fires, water rescue, any high priority priority calls. So they're not per se working a shift. They just respond back to those those emergencies. So we get credit for them uh with our uh North Carolina Department of Insurance ratings and things. Uh we get credit for paid on call coming back responding to those incidents. So if I backtrack to that um on a structure fire, so a so a residential structure fire, we need to put at least fifteen people on scene within the first uh five minutes. So our current staffing, which is uh six plus the Deputy Chief and I, uh that's eight. We get a couple of paid on call guys coming back. We need to get that number as close to fifteen as possible to keep our rating and things.
And how mu- what was the timeline for that?
In the first five minutes.
Five minutes.
Now.
Mutual aid also supports that.
Mutual aid, Calabash Ocean Isle does support that.
Now, the part-time people who fill in for, if you wish, somebody who's sick at a station, this they get, they obviously get paid.
Yes, per hour.
Per hour.
So uh a couple of questions still sitting out there. In in the fire district, does our fire district include that major new development on the north side of Old Georgetown Road to the west of Sandpiper?
Stone, stone.
Stone something.
No, it does not.
It does not?
It does not.
Okay. But it does include, like you said, up to Ocean Ridge?
Up to Ocean Ridge.
But not all of Ocean Ridge?
The southern portion of Ocean Ridge. It's only the southern portion. So when you go in uh Ocean Ridge, if you hang your first left, Summer, Summer Hill Glen, uh the new development, the new recreational facility, that's that's our portion. And then out um Castle Brook Way, uh
Yeah.
Part of that is included in that as well.
Okay.
And there's been a little bit of a residential construction boom in that southern portion, which that's quite a few homes for us.
Yeah. And there there's also uh what, once Angel Trace gets going, there'll be whatever that comes out to be. So there there are a lot of units projected
A lot of units.
in into the future that that comes here.
Now, I added a a short blurb in there about uh construction going on, the the data provided from Brunswick County. And again, I apologize, this is so small. Uh I thought it would be a little bit larger once it was in your hand. But the uh the data, if you haven't, um I'm not sure if you've visited the county website there. I I linked it there. Uh I do recommend you looking at that. It talks a lot about a construction in the county areas that are proposed and have been approved. So a little bit of residential um residential data there. So um you know, I'm highly expecting a lot of the visitors moving into those new developments or gonna be coming through Sunset Beach to our food line, our beach, things like that as well. So I think that is pertinent information for today's conversation. Um the data, the other graph is provided, and I think you've seen that before multiple times through uh Mr. White. Some of the numbers from his building inspections, uh a lot of those things have been completed since then. Sunset Ridge is completed, Birdwatch uh Sanctuary is on the on the move as well. So gives you a little data there.
So it it looks like over time, the uh the development fire fees will catch up with the manning. Yeah. So so where are you? Where is the fire department now? You've got a a chief, a deputy chief, and both of you are exempted, right?
Exempt.
So you work as long as we can get it out of you, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then what about your captains?
Uh we just we just promoted a uh the director of beach patrol, the division captain of beach patrol. And so that's a total of twenty-one employees. When you go over to the operations side, there's a a captain on each shift at Station One with two firefighters and a lieutenant at Station Two with two firefighters.
Okay, so you end up with the department's twenty-one full-time people?
Twenty-one full-time.
Including chief and deputy chief?
Yes. And then we have we have a part-time uh fire inspector who's quite busy. This this past thirty days have been pretty pretty tough, a lot of things going on. Uh and then we have a part-time administrative assistant.
Are you considered at full force now?
Full force, yes.
Okay.
How many volunteers did you have?
Uh we have three paid on call.
And then then part-timers?
Uh part-timers, we have uh the the roster with part-time personnel changes uh quite a bit, but we're currently at eight.
Are all of them sort of capable of pulling shifts and going uh going into a fire?
All the part-time staff, yes.
Now, your part-times are you, now, I've heard this, their part-times are usually from another fire department who do their work there during the week and they're made available, they tell you they're available to fill in if needed.
Correct.
So they're they're all qualified.
They're they're all.
But in fairness to the chief, there's probably, if there's eight part-timers on the roster, there's probably three that work uh any amount of time. Uh the other ones are on the roster and sometimes months, several months will go by and they will not have pulled a shift.
So they won't be called in?
Well, they're, when when a need occurs, it's happened here in the phone since we've been sitting here for three to three separate days. It'll be the same three that put their hand up and say, I can work.
It's very fluid.
Now, when, just as a point, too, to consider, and I'm not trying to so I need to think about this. This is a, this is a big deal, uh going four and three. But uh if I'm a full-time firefighter and I call in sick, part-timer then is called in to work, that is money, additional money that has to be spent on the part-timer, because I still get paid for being home and sick. Or if I'm going to training, or if I'm taking a vacation. So the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I would, I need to get in my own mind how much of that is gonna be saved and how much part-time we spend already. Because I would hope that this would mean that part-time would be rare, rarely needed part-time.
You could retire then.
But I go get paid anyway. So when I show up, he smiles.
Richard. What what does a part-time firefighter make per hour?
It 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 varies between sixteen and eighteen dollars an hour.
And a full-time, you know?
Uh I don't have the hourly rate, forty-five, eight, six, six for starting full-time.
Doesn't seem like a lot to run into a burning building.
They agree.
They would all agree.
So so going back a little bit on the exempt, you and the deputy are the only exempt personnel in your department?
The new beach patrol captain.
And the beach patrol captain. The other captains are hourly and regular there.
What else does the beach patrol captain do besides beach patrol?
So similar to the position of Deputy Chief Adams, his prior position, uh community risk reduction as well.
So he's also available to go on to go on to a go on to a shift if you're running and everybody gets sick or something like that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
He also is available to go on to the shift the way you and Joe are.
Correct.
Who is it? Have you been hiring?
Uh Paul Brown.
Brown.
Just being nosey. So so as an exempt uh employee, how much overtime flex time did you did you earn last year? Meaning overtime that you worked. Same for Joe.
We were similar, so we kept hundred and fifty, two hundred hours throughout the year.
Of of flex time?
Flex time.
Yeah. Were you able to use it?
A little bit. A little bit. Majority of them went away.
Did they mostly come during the summertime where you were stretched on the beach and all that kind of stuff?
You know, we can't just, we had that going into the summer. So, you know, late night calls, things like that, fires, water rescues, anything, you know, that can happen in January. So we've got a little bit built up already, you know, it it just happens. But the the summer is a large part portion of it.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Our with those changes in the beach patrol and the police department on Long Island, are are you two still working seven days a week?
Um we're hoping that that is drastically reduced. So last year, we didn't have that position filled. So Deputy Chief Adams, you know, the the previous director of beach patrol, we didn't have that. So him and I kinda teamed up and managed the that program last year. So we're hoping with this new addition, we can very limit limit that and take those hours way down.
Hundred and fifty to two hundred hours is a lot of time to give up.
It's a lot. Agreed, but.
Kinda depends on what kind of career you came from.
Yeah. If you're the clocker all your life, it might be, but if you've been working free zip, it ain't nothing.
On on the police department, I got paid for every either cop time or overtime.
I would, I I'd wanna say that, you know, as I spent a lot of time on the beach last year and the year before, but you know, you were there, you guys were there all the time. There's no question about that and we truly appreciate that. But hiring this new person could take some of that pressure off you guys, which would be, that should be good, spend some time with your families.
That's the point.
Uh that's that's, that always helps, you know?
That's the point. That's the point. Materia is uh working on the figures for you. I spoke to her Friday and she's gonna be back soon with uh how that affects the F D budget. What what?
The um I guess kind of a loaded question. I would assume that when we did the budget, I'll wait for them because I want them to hear this. Go, guys, ready?
Yeah.
Um when we did the budget, well, I didn't, Mike Sosil didn't, but we've sat out there and maybe this. But uh when you guys did the budget last year, uh there was an anticipated fire fee that would be coming to the fire department to pay for uh fire, not a hundred percent, but to pay for it. And I would bet that that amount of money has increased over what it was anticipated. Because I, knowing Tara, she tends to be pretty conservative. So I'll bet her estimate of growth in the community and in our fire district for new developments would have been on the lower side.
To Pete, to answer that a little bit more, fire fees themselves haven't gone up. What makes them go up is new homes.
I know. That's my question to him. How much more money are we projected to get in the fiscal year we're sitting in right now than we budgeted for as revenue?
Yeah.
Back last June?
Good question.
So the increase is seventy-four thousand dollars expected increase.
Over what we had budgeted would be revenue from fire fees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, seventy-four thousand dollars and Tara's gonna provide that to you with that project.
Thank you. That's some money.
It's it definitely, it secures one of, you know, if we're talking of the personnel wise, it it would pay for one firefighter.
Okay.
Or the next project that I'm presenting.
Don't get carried away here.
We love you, but you know.
Your arm is going into the well.
Tough conversation, tough conversation. So if you're ready, the next one is the boat replacement. So uh our two thousand and twelve, and I apologize again for the small writing. I'll email you out a uh apparatus replacement plan that you can see. But our two thousand and twelve inflatable boat, uh it was due for replacement in twenty twenty-two. So I've put that on the uh recommendation this year. It's a seventy, our current boat's a seventeen-foot vessel. It's a great boat. It's a bit small for ocean-based. It's a bit small for ocean-based rescues, so, um, late night, moderate to high surf. It's fairly unsafe to operate in the ocean. Uh, so I'm requesting to upsize that a little bit to a twenty-one foot, um, very, very slimmer to, but to the boat we have right now. It's an inflatable boat. Um, so a little bit larger. The motor's a, engine's a one-fifty horsepower, so, um.
We're using the same engine that we just bought a couple of years ago, aren't we? You're not talking about replacing that?
Engine, uh, total package, total package.
The eighty-five grand includes a hundred and fifty horsepower motor.
And a trailer and.
And trailer.
Yep. That's, that's out the door. That's a, I, I found this company Fluid. It's a North Carolina-based company. It's, it's, uh, a few minutes north of Raleigh. So it's pretty, pretty neat. They're going to be on the, I've been told in, in June, they'll be on the North Carolina State Contracting Program. So they're getting some boats out in North Carolina. They seem to be, make a good product. But the total cost of that's eighty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars. That would make our operations in the ocean, any, um, large area searches that we're doing in the ocean, uh, boating accidents, jet ski accidents, um, make it a bit safer for our staff to get out and operate.
And the new motor is one-fifty?
It's one-fifty.
And the one we have right now is ninety?
Ninety.
So, yeah. Why wouldn't you keep the ninety? Is it really, it would underpower the boat? Or do you think it would help in the resale of the trade-in?
Yeah, let me, let me talk about that. So we, back in 2021, we had a motor failure and we installed a new engine, uh, on the boat. It was a bit of a, um, an emergency, uh, purchase. At the time, Chief Haslamar and I discussed, uh, should we come to council for a new motor or should we throw a new boat? You know, due to the age of the current boat. At the time, we were able to get a new engine, um, quick, quickly and get us back up in service because it failed summerish, if I'm remembering correctly. A boat, as you know, at the time, a boat was a year, two years out from construction. So that wasn't really an option for us at the time. So we did, uh, install a new motor back in 2021 on the current boat, uh, and we upgraded to a ninety horsepower. So the conversation could be had that we could buy a new boat and put the, our engine on the boat. Uh, so there's a few problems with that is number one, if we try to trade in or sell our current boat with no motor, it's basically, we're not going to really get anything for it. It's almost at a zero dollar.
So you want to sell a package?
So you, I, I feel like we, we're going to be able now, uh, you know, I can't be certain, but I feel we're going to be able to recoup the money that we've, uh, just recently paid for the engine and get that value out of it when we sell. Because it's, it's still a working boat. So there's a lot of departments out there looking in that price range for a boat. So I feel like we're going to benefit from selling that boat or trading it in, whatever option we, we can work out.
But you don't know the trade-in value right now?
I, I don't know the trade-in value right now.
That's something you can get for us or?
Well, that's, that's going to be tough. Definitely going to be reaching out and talk about a trade-in. I think we're going to be better off selling it, um, selling it. You know, we have a few different ways we can sell it.
Okay.
Okay. Got to put that in paper for a open bid if you sell it out without a trade-in?
We've been exploring, uh, a website called GovDeals. We really think that that's going to be more beneficial. Uh, the way we do it, it keeps items local. Uh, on GovDeals, it gets it a nationwide search. So if we find a department in California that's looking for that specific need, I really think the GovDeals option is going to be a better option for us when we, uh, move, look to get rid of equipment.
Can we do that without putting it in a paper and saying we're, we're selling this?
GovDeals, if we go with them, which we are looking strongly at going with them townwide, um, they take care of all that.
Okay. We don't want them.
Oh, we will not.
Can we sell other things through that, uh, like?
We can sell anything.
UTVs, uh, whatever.
And it will basically, um, save administration time by going with them because we just give everything to them and they, they deal with it, start to finish. We just get the money.
What's their cut?
Yeah.
DC?
Good morning.
The website, they handle all the billing and they charge, uh, it's a, a two-and-a-half percent fee, I believe it is. So if we sell something for a hundred dollars, they'll bill for a hundred dollars plus two-and-a-half percent. So we get a hundred dollars and they handle all the finances. And once the person pays, they have, uh, five days to pick the item up. We're not responsible for shipping or anything like that. The buyer is responsible for everything. And once we let them know that the, the item's been picked up, then nowhere else to transfer the funds.
So all those fees and overhead costs are above the, the, the price that we agree on or set that sells for?
Yeah, that's a, uh, the buyer knows that, so the buyer is responsible.
Who establishes the price? Do we do that?
We do.
Wow. Okay.
Similar to the eBay, you know, if you've ever bought anything from eBay, there'd be a, we would put a minimum that we're going to accept for that. And if the, the item sells over that price, definitely we'd go for it. But if it doesn't meet that price, we wouldn't have to sell it.
Did, did they have a twenty-one-foot inflatable rescue boat on there?
No, no, not at all. But, um, back to our previous conversation. If we move our current motor over to a boat, that's going to limit us on size. So we're going to be stuck with a boat that's really seventeen-foot. And I would really like to see a twenty-one, a twenty or, you know, a, a, a larger boat than we have now. Boats are very expensive, unfortunately.
Richard, just want to get it clear in my head. It's eighty-five thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty-four cents. You said out the door. Is that, that includes the engine?
And the truck, yes.
Yeah.
And trailer.
Trailer. It comes with, uh, um, the GPS unit in, inside the side scan and emergency lighting. So it's a turnkey, which I'm a big fan of. We don't have to use multiple vendors to deliver it and then get somebody else to install things. So it's a pretty neat, you know? So this, this company, this Fluid company, they, they have a large contract with what, SpaceX? So they've sold quite a few boats, the boats that are out picking this, the, the spacecraft out of the ocean and things like that. So they're getting their name out there. I like it because it's a North Carolina-based company and that's very rare to find.
They'll help in picking up balloon parts too.
That's it.
Up down off our coast. Yes.
When we buy something, Lisa, like this, just like when we buy a pickup truck, um, we are,
depreciating.
How can we get, how can we know that we're paying a competitive, uh, amount? Pickup trucks may be a little easier because you can go to the dealers and see what they are and say, hey, you know, how much for that? And they cut you a quote. But how would we do something like this on a boat? Because every boat's different.
It, it is. This is, the boat's a, boat's hard, boat's hard. Uh, most of the inflatable market is overseas. Italy, Zodiacs from wherever. So that's tough. We try to look for items that are on the North Carolina Sheriff's procurement, who's already did the competitive bidding and things like that. North Carolina State. So back to the pickup trucks. I think each department utilizes, uh, the North Carolina State system that's already been done.
Did you say that Fluid Watercraft was a boat to get into that program?
In June, they should be on the North Carolina State procurement.
Okay, good. Okay, that answers my question then.
That, that's a big selling point for me. It takes, um, you know, because if we didn't, if they weren't on that program, I would have to find three competitive bids at that price.
I thought you had said they weren't on the program. I misheard you then.
In June, in June, that's what made that company appealing.
Thank you.
And every department head is required to get three quotes if they're not going with the state contract.
Okay.
On everything.
Got a question. Silly. How come all your sheets showed twenty-one, twenty-two bunch?
Well, uh, the days working up to this, I was working on the, uh, FEMA AFG grant and, uh, my eyes were very, very strange, strained. I apologize.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, moving on, uh, the pickup truck, I wanted to put that in there, uh, for Kerry. I need a, a new pickup truck. I need to add a vehicle to the fleet. So, um, currently I want to talk about our, our vehicles. So, um, the Deputy Chief and I have, have the Tahos. Uh, the new captain's got a, one of the pickup trucks. So currently at Station One, we have two pickup trucks. Uh, the Dodge twenty-five hundred has a fuel cell that fuels Beach Patrol buggies and it pulls the boat. So in the event of a call, that truck is used to take the boat to a boat ramp and things like that. The second pickup truck is utilized for, uh, the jet ski. So pulling the jet ski, responding to the beach. If somebody gets injured on the beach and we have to transport the patient off the beach, that's what that pickup truck is for. So recently we were awarded the North Carolina League of Municipalities Grant, which we purchased a rehab kit. So I think I, hopefully you've seen pictures of what that is. It's a, it's a very nice kit. Some of a program that we've been trying to get in place for years. And I need somewhere to store that. So, uh, we looked at trailer options, but, uh, the best option to do is a bed of a pickup truck with a, with a nice cover. So I want to be able to keep that pickup truck at Station Two to be used as a rehab or a utility vehicle. So, you know, if, if they need to make a run to the hardware store, they can take a pickup truck and things like that. So, uh, we explored options, uh, with a, um, Public Works, uh, and then when I spoke to Kerry and saw that was an option, I'd really love to jump on that. The really nice truck's been taken care of. So I want to add a truck to our fleet. Uh, the only costs associated with that, we need to outfit it with emergency lights, uh, radio and things like that for the sum of eighty-five hundred dollars or close to that. Um, that would be a bed cover, toolbox, things like that.
Okay.
Okay, moving on would be UTV replacement. I'm requesting that we purchase another UTV. So, uh, we have a twenty, twenty-twenty-one John Deere UTV that's, uh, just wrapped up, wrapped up its third season on the beach. It's, it's in pretty rough shape rust-wise and items like that. That, it's not going to make it but much longer. So another UTV to be added to the fleet there. Uh, the cost of twenty-two thousand dollars, that included, includes outfit and things like that.
Yeah. So that's kind of up from fifteen when we started doing this, three or four years, five years ago.
Well, you know, we, we were big fans of the John Deere units that we ran when we, when we originally, we, we tried a lot of manufacturers and brands out there. As you all know, the beach is a very, very harsh environment. It's the worst conditions that a vehicle can be operated in. We were fans of the John Deere. They were simple. They were, at the time, they were seven thousand dollars. So they started out at seven thousand dollars. They hovered around seven to eight, nine thousand dollars for a few years. Now they're up to twelve, thirteen thousand dollars. So really, for the money we were saving at the time going with the John Deeres, it, it was a good idea. But now they're up in the price range. Uh, we've decided to make the change over to, um, the, the Can-Am side-by-sides. It's a local dealer, dealer just down on Highway Nine. That's the biggest selling point of it. They're the closest dealer to us. Uh, the Police Department's been running the Can-Ams for quite a while and had really, really good service out of it. So, uh, we're hoping the one we bought last year does a good job. We'd like to continue with that same model version somewhere, somewhere like that.
Really not used the new one yet, have you?
Not yet, not yet. It's, it's been outfitted and ready for the season.
When they come off the beach, do they get hosed down to get all the saltwater and salt?
Every day, every day. It's a, over the years, we've tried many, many things. There's, uh, quite a few Marines. So there's products called Saltway. We've tried it. Cleaning them every day, washing them every day. The negative of it is, is, is the vehicles in the frame and the brake system. Every time you wash them, what you do is you push salt inside. So when these vehicles rust, they rust from the inside. We've seen it first, firsthand and there's no, there's no way to combat that. It's, it is what it is. You know, uh, spending all day on the beach is just devastating to a unit like that. We've realized that about that three-year mark is, is the sweet spot for new unit. Because at that point, the repairs become costly and it's, it's really not worth it.
Now, in your capital replacement plan, you're talking every three years, right, to get a new one?
Every, uh, every three years replace the.
Every three years replacing, yes. Okay.
Does that twenty-two thousand include outfitting with light sirens?
Lights. The unit's around twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars. So that leaves two thousand dollars for a small amount of lights and sire.
And these go faster than the John Deeres?
They do go faster. They do go faster.
Which was the selling point that, uh, Chief Klimar had brought in, uh, for his people having to respond off of the beach.
It was, and for, for, for us, that was never really a problem. Prior to last season, we were going out to the beach at six-thirty-ish. And at six-thirty in the morning, there's really no traffic, no problems. Uh, now that we're going out on the beach at nine AM, traffic has, you know, is, is, is significant at nine AM. So the, the traffic holdup that the John Deere gators have going over the bridge at, really when they're going up the hill on the bridge, those units are really topped out at about fifteen to sixteen. And a lot of people don't like that. And it's a bit of a safety factor when there's cars trying to dart, dart around you and pass you. So the, the units that at least go the speed limits, a, a good idea. It makes it, makes things a little bit safer when we go off. And then again, it's even more significant when we exit the beach at that five-thirty, six PM timeframe. Okay. So one, one item that I left off the packet for some unknown reason, and we spoke about this at a previous Beach Patrol meeting, was an additional twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for, uh, a third Beach Patrol attendant in June, July and August. So if we add one additional person on the beach trend in those, in that ninety-day timeframe, when, when our season's really the, the biggest, uh, that's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, I would, I would like to do that as well.
And what's the timeframe for that?
June, July, August.
How many would you have in, uh, for, outside of that?
Two.
You'd have two, two Beach, Beach Patrol and then in the June, July and August, you'd have three.
Correct.
That's on the beach every day from nine AM to?
Six PM.
I'm sorry, Richard, what was the cost?
Uh, twelve thousand, five hundred dollar.
These are all part-time employees?
All part-time seasonal employees. Well, some, some of the staff are, are on our part-time fire department roster as well, but it's still seasonal.
Did you have three before at any one time out there?
Previous seasons, we had four.
Well, that's right. We cut your numbers, didn't we?
Last year, we ran the entirety of, of two. But as we said earlier, DC and I spent a lot of time out there as a third and even fourth person when it, when it's busy out there.
So these three people will be there, the same three will be there all day? Or will they be like six people, three of them work half a day and three of them work the second half of the day?
All, all day, all day.
All day long. So when you do nine AM to six PM, is that on the beach nine to six? Or, or showing up to the fire department at nine o'clock?
Um, so.
And leaving the fire department at six o'clock?
So they, we go full staff at ten AM. So we, uh, initiated a workout session last year. So every day between hours nine and ten, they're working out. So they come on the clock at nine, get out to the beach, do a workout, do a swim training program, uh, and then start their, their rotation at ten AM. But they're on the clock at nine.
So they do this every day? They do a swim training program every day?
Some form of, some form of, uh, either swim training or CPR training. And we, we initiated a form of training. Now, it could be, you know, reviewing protocols and, uh, reviewing their equipment carried. But we try to initiate a workout and training program every day.
Because they're also training in, in jet ski launching and anything else that we require on the beach.
At, at six PM, then they leave the beach or they?
Five-thirty, they come off the beach, go off the clock at six.
So that leaves it to the Police Department to handle the earlier hours and the later hours?
Correct.
For, for our seven to seven rules that we have.
Yeah.
So when the, the April eighth figures come out, we will actually have the full figures of the estimate of what beach patrol is going to cost us for the year, personnel and equipment and stuff like that.
Okay, moving on, a couple of station items. Uh, the station one carpet. It's around twenty years old. It's uh, showing its age. I would like to uh, replace that carpet. We've got one quote so far. If, if, if council approves, I'll definitely get three quotes from the local vendors. But ninety-one hundred dollars to replace carpet, carpet, every bit of carpet at station one would be replaced in that.
And you'd recommend staying with carpet or?
Uh, we, we've spoke about doing a hardwood. I'm, I'm not sure hardwood's going to be a good decision for a training room. The bulk of that is a, is our training room at station one. I think it's for the noise instructors and thing. I think carpet's the best deal. We are going to explore carpet squares. Um, I'm not too familiar with how that works. I don't know if that would be a great option or more costly, but.
It's more costly.
More cost, okay.
It's just easy to replace if you have a big spill, but it's more costly from the start.
You go to perimeter and everything else slants in.
Yeah, okay, okay. But um, I think carpet's going to be our best decision for a classroom setting. And then the bedrooms carpet, good idea as well for the acoustics mostly.
Check if the state has a contract with somebody.
I will, I will. The good news about the carpet is we have local vendors in town here that uh, so far Williams Carpet came out, did the measure and did that. So we've got a couple of uh, significant companies right here close that I'd love to use, but I'll definitely check the state.
Check, you might, you might want to check uh, what they use, the, the type of material they use for gym floors. It's, it's a, it's a softer material. It's a, it's a durable material.
We have that in the workout room.
Okay.
The rubber matting?
Yeah, it's a, it's a type of rubber, but it's.
It's a resilient.
Very, yeah. Now I'm, I'm not, I don't know if this will be better or not.
Yeah.
Certainly uh, they work very well in gyms, what they use nowadays. It's very durable.
I did my garage in and it is, it's expensive.
Is it?
Yeah, it's more, I would say it's twice what carpeting is, but it's, but that's just a guess.
Yep.
Okay, and the, the last item is station one landscaping. Uh, station one landscaping's looking pretty rough if you drove by there lately. We had a pretty significant repair done to the sewage tank up front, which uh, kind of did a lot of damage to the rocks. But a lot of the shrubbery is getting overgrown and well, I can't say overgrown, but just looking, probably reaching its end of life. And I spoke to Mr. Sorrels about a possible sidewalk, walk project that you all are looking at or will be looking at. So uh, my recommendation would be that uh, if and when that project does get funded or approved through you, that um, you consider uh, bumping up the landscape in that station one and doing uh, some sod. And cause the, the pear trees in the front will have to be removed for that project. So I'd love to go ahead.
They're just weeds anyway. They need to come out.
They need to come out.
They're going to fall and hit something.
Yeah.
And we need a sidewalk there so people can go from the temporary parking lot we have under the bridge. Right now it's a, it's a cluster on, on.
Matt said it's probably going to be around a hundred and fifty.
Dollars?
Cause you gotta move to utilities and everything else.
Well, this also incorporated outdoor uh, type kitchen for the fire department's staff.
No, it will not. It will not. But um, I spoke to Keith from Nature Work. He's uh, maintains all our facilities here. And uh, the fifteen thousand dollars is a very rough estimate. You know, I didn't know really when this was taking place, so I didn't ask for an official estimate. But just a rework of the bed, some sod work, uh, the irrigation, when the sidewalk project takes place is going to have to be repaired and redone and things like that. So just making it look decent, taking some bushes out, things like that. Nothing, nothing crazy. Just make it look nice. And that's all I have.
We can't expect our citizens to keep up their property.
We've got to.
And not keep up our own.
Correct.
You keep up your property.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a, take my break?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Back to him. I don't, I got, I swallowed one and burned it now.
Chris, pull it this side. Testing.
Testing.
Testing, testing, testing.
Testing, testing. You get, you good, Pete?
Yes, testing.
Testing, okay. Let's.
Testing.
Thank you, Alan. Miles, Keith.
I am placing the chart.
Everyone good?
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
You can see the break, the breakdown there of the interceptor floor, base price of forty-seven thousand dollars. And a total for upfitting all three vehicles of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. We will transfer as much equipment from the old vehicles that we can in order to reuse and save money. Radios, cameras, radars, those sorts of things will be transferred. Uh, like I said, anything that we can switch over, we're going to do that. You should have a vehicle replacement plan. It may not look as large as this one. But it's going to show you that a twenty-sixteen vehicle is being replaced and two twenty-seventeens. Those are highlighted in yellow for you. Two of the twenty-seventeens were bought when we switched to the take-home vehicle program. We purchased those in twenty-eighteen. I anticipated a five-year replacement once we switched to the take-home vehicle. I've since upped that to seven.
Wow.
Because there were, the, the program's working extraordinarily well. Uh, as I mentioned, I don't know if, I think some of you were on council when we did that. I know Mr. Corbett was.
Yeah.
People take better care of a vehicle when it's theirs. Uh, if I'm going to look at your car and the only person that drove the car is you, there's nobody else to blame for it being in disrepair. So the program's working well. So well that, you know, a couple of those vehicles um, may even be able to stretch, be stretched out past twenty-twenty-four.
So that year, two thousand seventeen, what we, we had what? Five vehicles that we replaced?
Correct.
And so you're going to replace two, replace, yeah, two of those, one older one? And then uh, stretch the other three out another year or so?
At least another year or so, yes.
That the uh, it, it seems like you've got a, a kind of a mix of vehicles. You have the pickup trucks and you have the uh, Ford Explorers.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us something about how they're working out where they're best utilized or?
We have five pickup trucks and one is assigned to uh, Officer Hall, who did code enforcement and animal control. His truck has a dog box, a ventilated dog box in the back. Uh, it's wired with a fan. So that if we have an animal in the box, it keeps it cool. The other four are issued to our patrol sergeants, one on each shift. If a sergeant has the need to go to the beach to help our beach patrolers who are out there in a U T V, they can access the beach much better in a pickup truck than they can a, a two-wheel drive Ford Explorer.
No question. Um, even the four-wheel drive explorers are not good in soft sands.
A- as you know, I mean, there's been times where the fire has told us, uh, don't go on the beach with those explorers unless you absolutely have to.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, we need to be able to get our supervisors out there should the need arise from our officer on the strand or our compliance people that are going to be on the strand this year. And that's how we've assigned those F-one-fifties. So to go, to continue with patrol function in an explorer, I think worked extremely well. It's a smaller footprint and there's more room for storage uh, inside the vehicle and not having to utilize a truck bed.
And every full-time officer has a, now at least has a take-home car?
That is correct.
Is there a certain amount of time once somebody's hired before they're given a, a take-home vehicle? Like I know you have some couple spares or, or ace.
Correct. They, they have to be through their field training program before they're allowed to take their vehicle home. So until they're allowed to function without the const, without the immediate supervision of a field training officer, they're not allowed to operate a vehicle without that field training officer being nearby. So even to, even to drive it home, uh, if something would happen on the way home, while that person's uniformed in a marked car, I can't expect them just to drive by and ignore it. But they're not yet released from F T O, so we don't allow them to take it home until they're signed off on.
Okay. I noticed this morning there was a unmarked, uh, well, the, it seemed like the badging had been taken off of it. Uh, Explorer. Uh, is that an extra? Is, what is that?
It's what we call a ghost vehicle.
Okay.
It's fully marked.
Okay.
But it's marked with reflective white decals. So if you hit it with your headlights, it's going to shine bright as day.
Okay.
Uh, you'll be able to see that it clearly says.
I thought it was a spare that had been stripped.
We have, we have.
Which one is that?
We have two of those. Uh, we have one on either rotation so that we have one in service uh, pretty much all the time. We give those to officers that are more active, more proactive, that do a lot, uh, a lot more uh, motor vehicle enforcement. And it's kind of a way to not only reward them for the work that they do, but um, it, it sometimes helps with uh, our abilities to enforce traffic.
He used to hide behind billboards and now they don't do that anymore.
We don't need that anymore.
We don't have any billboards.
No any billboards.
Do you know off the top of your head which two vehicles?
Which ones are ghost vehicles?
They say spare.
No, they're not spare. Uh, the one that is assigned to Anthony Cabeli, which is P-nine. And P-twenty, which is assigned to Eric Gonzalez. And now Steve Bullock's driving that vehicle since Eric's, uh. On light duty. And Steve's car had an unfortunate meeting with a deer.
Yeah.
That's Steve Bullock.
The deer one.
Okay.
That's P four. No.
No, it's P, P twenty's the ghost.
Twenty, P twenty and P nine.
But Gonzalez has not ended its bullock.
Correct. Or is at the body shop. Or some shop.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on? The vehicles?
So you're not asking for anything that isn't, wasn't in the process already?
Correct. Yeah, the only thing that, um, I'm asking for in advance that isn't, that is still operational, which is, um, request number two. For the UTV. This, if you look at the vehicle replacement plan once again, BP one.
Mm-hmm.
Is a two thousand eighteen Can-Am. We stretched a lot of life out of this only because we weren't full time on the beach until just last year. Um, so that vehicle is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty five. My intention is to replace it at the end of this beach season. Uh, and I don't wanna ask for supplemental, uh, funding in the middle of the budget year. They have, we have, uh, a new Can-Am now that's gonna be put into the rotation. But I'm anticipating that the, the twenty eighteen is gonna need replaced. For the summer, for the start of the summer season in twenty twenty five, which for us is gonna kick off at the end of this month with Easter weekend. And I wanna have a new one ready to go by then.
The, uh, fire asked for. A similar one at twenty two thousand. Is there a difference between the way it would need to be outfitted? Or do you have things coming from prior Can-Am that could be put into here that would reduce the cost?
We're gonna transfer equipment, which is why there's a difference in the cost of ours versus theirs. They asked for twenty two, I believe.
I did, yeah.
Um.
But they don't have, they're not replacing one there.
Yeah, we're swapping everything over. So if anything's in disrepair, it's gonna be. Small enough that our budget will be able to handle it. Without additional funding.
Okay.
What we're replacing coincidentally is a four seater. Uh, we're gonna remain with the two seat vehicle, so it's a little more affordable. Which of course, when we bought the four seater, it was fifteen five.
Should've bought two.
I should've bought four. Any questions with, uh, that?
Okay.
And that's something that would be spent late in the year. Uh, you might be able to order, but it's.
Correct.
So the plan is having three UTVs in service during the season?
Correct. And that's what we currently have.
Yeah.
So I know when we purchased the one last year, there were some great end of the year deals going on. I'm hoping we can fall into one of those. And maybe purchase this vehicle in December, January, somewhere around then. And again, I don't wanna have to ask council for a supplemental appropriation.
And one of the three right now is a John Deere.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, uh, we're gonna. Get that, get through this year with that and I, I'm, I'm gonna wanna remove that for the same reasons the fire department explained in their presentation. We're gonna have our civilian employees operating that vehicle this year. It's already been outfitted for their needs. But we're still gonna run into the same issues the fire department did with getting that over the bridge and back to the fire station at the end of the day.
Would you still keep the UTVs at the, uh, fire department at Station One?
Yes.
Because it makes sense.
It makes a lot more sense.
Geographically.
Absolutely. Yeah, because with the John Deere, we definitely don't wanna run that down Sunset Boulevard. If we do have the occasion to bring it here, we cut back through Seaside Station.
Is there space that these are stored inside?
They are.
At night?
Yes.
Sort of.
There's, there's space.
There is. I don't wanna be cute. It's.
It's okay, you're not.
Okay.
We, we maintain them the same way the fire department does. I know a question was asked about if they're hosed off. Uh, they are, they're, they're. You know, we do our best to take care of them and try to extend the life on them.
Sir, since we're on here, same questions for the fire department. They, they, what are the patrol hours and do you keep? When do the vehicles get out there to the beach? When do they leave the beach?
We're running six A to six P. So they'll be out there at the start of the shift. Idea is that the, the officer that's working the beach that day will report directly to the fire station. Um, same with the compliance folks, they're not gonna come here. They're gonna go straight to the fire station and get the UTV.
Would they report at six AM at the fire station?
They should be on the strand at six.
Okay.
Yeah, so they'd report hopefully.
So they're.
Forty-five, five fifty.
But they're getting paid. We're not expecting them to get to the beach on their own. They're getting paid during that time, I would assume.
The officers are for the fifteen minutes. They're required to report fifteen minutes early. Um, compliance folks, that's not built in. So I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's covered in, I think it's, it's not FMLA, but, um. I know it's covered that, uh, dawning and dolphing, if you will, is what they call it. There is federal case law that says that, you know, for those sort of activities where it's a required part of their job. Um, I know the case that was made that, that this was based off of was, uh, an employee in a meat, meat packing plant that had to put on protective gear. And sued because he wasn't being compensated for putting on that protective gear. And they said, no, that's part of the function to do the job.
Okay. Nobody's arguing with that. My, my question becomes, we have a lot of our codes or particular parts of our codes. That basically have a seven PM enforcement. You know, seven PM. You know, the unoccupied equipment and stuff on the beach. Cabanas and all that need to be removed. Who? Who enforces that? If the fire department's off and the police department's off?
It's no different than if there's a call for service on the strand after six PM. So anytime throughout the night, the patrol shift would be responsible for that. The intention is not that when our police officer and our compliance officer comes off the beach, that there's nobody there for the next twelve hours. There's still a patrol responsibility for our working patrol officers. Uh, it's just not a constant presence like we'll have between six A and six P.
Okay, well, the, the question becomes, we've got specific beach related codes that. Have a seven o'clock. Switch time.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So the officer who's driving around in a vehicle that can't go on the beach. Is not going to be making a run up the beach at seven o'clock to see that everything's been removed.
They might be.
Okay, maybe I'm making, I'm missing the point. It, it. We, we've got the codes in there. We've had the discussions about what the rules are. Is, my question is, how do we as a town enforce? The codes that we put into effect would say. The cabanas and, and things need to be off beach by seven, seven PM. If we have no. Nobody out there on a regular basis enforcing.
The unoccupied cabanas do need to be removed by seven PM. Occupied cabanas do not. So if there is an unoccupied cabana at seven and we're not there. I guess the assumption could be made if it's abandoned, it might be abandoned when we go by at eight or nine. Uh, if the intention is to have us there, whoops, I guess I shouldn't do that. Uh, there, right at seven PM, perhaps we can adjust, um, the time that our compliance officers work. The problem is if we do that, we're not gonna have a police officer out there and the compliance officers do not have enforcement.
Right.
Ability. So if they have, um, an error, an, an issue at seven oh five PM with an unoccupied cabana. And while they're taking it down and removing it from the strand, they're approached by, um. A homeowner or a guest that owns it, they would simply have to call for an officer to come out to either issue a citation or deescalate anything that might happen. So I guess, you know, to answer your question, my, my thought was that we'd handle it the way we have been handling it. Uh, it's no different than after six PM, somebody goes out there and cuts their dog off of a leash. You know, where.
Well, well, the answer is basically we don't handle things after six PM. I mean, that's the reality.
That's, that's not accurate, Mr. Corbett. The reason I say that is it's, it's like saying if we're not on Georgetown Road to catch a speeder, that we're not handling things on Georgetown Road.
No, that's, that's a big apples and orange thing. I, I'm not trying to get into an argument, but we, we put in codes, we had the, we had. The, the beach season discussions to, to determine how to make it work. And, and. Is sort of my understanding that, that. If we had, we put the codes in and we have it seven o'clock set up there, that we would have a capability to enforce.
And we do, and if your intention is that we are there at. At, right at seven o'clock, then we'll just have to adjust the schedules to make that happen. If. You know, if, if, if we're not immediately there at seven, it would still be a violation at eight. That was my thought, is that when the officer patrols the strand, if they see the violation, they're gonna take. The appropriate action, whether it be to disable the, or dismantle the, the cabana or the chair or whatever that's there and remove that abandoned property from the beach.
Okay.
But if your expectation is that. At seven oh one, we're patrolling the beach looking for abandoned, abandoned property. Then we're gonna have to adjust the schedule for either our, uh, our beach patrol, police officer.
No, I'm not looking for that. What I'm looking for is, is some clarity that every day sometime. Reasonably after seven, there is a police patrol that goes up and down the strand. Whether it's eight o'clock or eight thirty or something like that. And, and I, I didn't hear that clearly.
Okay.
That there would be a daily.
I apologize if you missed.
Sweep of the strand.
I apologize if you misunderstood, but that. That is part of their patrol responsibility.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and we can ensure that. Right around the seven o'clock hour or close there, there too. That they make that pass just to make sure that there are no abandoned. Whatever you have on the beach.
Chief, with, chief.
Thank you.
With the new, with the vehicles you have, the front wheel drives, they have, they're gonna have trouble on the beach anyway. Is there, there's the reluctance of a police officer going to, up onto the beach because they might get stuck? Uh, especially.
I don't know that there's a reluctance on the beach.
Okay.
Where that comes from.
Those trucks go on the beach pretty good, don't they?
I'm sorry.
Trucks go on the beach pretty good.
Trucks, no problem with the.
I've, I've, I've never had.
Front wheel drive.
An issue with mine on the beach. I mean, I get scared sometimes because I don't wanna get stuck and get pictures.
Yeah. So what you're basically saying to John is that during the evening hours sometime. Your guys are gonna make a pass on the beach. Look for cabanas, whatever left there. And, uh, report them or move them or do something with them. Probably every day. It'd be part of their duty every day.
It's no different than driving through your individual neighborhoods.
Okay.
At some point during their shift, they're coming through.
Yeah, okay.
Um, we'll just give them direction to make sure that it's closer to the seven PM hour.
Turn daylight on.
Four eight o'clock. Unless, unless somebody's driving, some of us other people live over here on the mainland, somebody go over.
Oh, yeah.
John, you can change your walk.
Based upon the status system, what's going on in the town at the time.
Call in.
I have no enforcement authority.
You, you don't have to. You got a telephone.
Besides, I can't run very fast and chase them down.
Call in, don't you? Just walk down through there at seven.
I, I think it needs to be understood, maybe it is understood by everybody, that, uh, after six PM. It depends on what's happening else in the town as to the frequency.
Oh, absolutely.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Of, of beach, uh, going up and down the emergency access way at the beach. Uh, I've got a question, chief, that, uh.
If I may, the captain just brought up a, a really good point. Staffing sometimes plays into that too. And the reason I say that is if we have two people working a night shift. Because we adjust sometimes to make sure that we have sufficient coverage during the day to do the things that we have to do. But if there's two people working and one person unlocks the gate, lets himself on, locks the gate behind him. And is driving the strand and it's clear on the east or clear on the west side, that leaves one person that might need help. It's a little bit of a delay for that officer to make it back off the beach and, and come to them. So it might decrease the frequency that we do let ourselves on the beach. So it's not, as Mr. Hargreaves alluded to, that there's. Um, I, I don't remember the word you used, but it's not that we don't wanna go out there. It's just sometimes it's. It may not be the best thing to spend a lot of time out there depending upon the staffing.
On any shift, you have two officers and a sergeant, correct?
As long as everybody's healthy.
Okay.
And nobody has to make a trip to Bolivia.
Yeah.
With a prisoner. There's a lot of variables into that.
Yeah. Yeah, all I'm, all I'm saying is just, they're scheduled to make a sweep every day. It may not happen because of exactly what you're talking about, but at least schedule to make a sweep of the beach. In the evening, maybe before dark or something like that, that can pick up the problems. There. Now, chief.
Okay.
I, I have a question now. You said just now that the, what are you, what are we gonna call the civilian?
Compliance.
Compliance officer.
Yes, sir.
That guy has no. Enforcement.
Authority.
Authority.
Correct.
Now that means if. I'm your man, I'm going down the beach, I see a person. With a, with a bottle, drinking a beer, bottle, bottle or something like that. I walk over and talk to that person. That person gives me the same reaction that the fire department beach patrol got. Remember, that's why we changed to police. Because remember you had said a number of times last year, the uniforms makes a statement to everybody.
Correct.
And I agree with you a hundred percent on that. So if this guy gets screamed at. He therefore has to call the other police officer on the beach to come to him, come there and write the ticket.
That's correct.
Okay. Is this gonna make it? This is gonna make it more difficult? For the civilian doing his job? And it's gonna, it could make the police officer's job very difficult, bopping back and forth, supporting this guy, doing his own. Work on the beach. Are you gonna be as effective this year as last year? In your estimation?
Time, time will tell. If you recall, when we did the beach presentation, I asked for personnel. And when I didn't get personnel, the option was that we reduce to one and.
Yeah.
Hire some seasonal employees to do.
Yeah.
Compliance.
Yeah.
The majority of the people comply. It's really in how you approach the people, I think.
I agree with that.
If we see what the fire department, uh, told us they saw. Then I might be coming back to you at the beach season wrap up saying this just didn't work. We didn't have a lot of calls for direct assistance from the fire department when they were getting. Supposedly screamed at and cussed at. Um, so I, I can't. I'm not saying that didn't happen, but. What should have happened was they should have just backed off and said, okay, you, you wanna be ugly, then. We're gonna call somebody here that has some sort of recourse if you continue to be ugly. Which is exactly how our compliance people are gonna be trained. That if you get anything other than. Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Then you back away and you call for the police officer and our police officers are being instructed. If your compliance person calls you. And says this person won't listen to what I asked them to do. The warn, their warning is done. They were warned by the compliance person when the officer shows up. Would have been simply removing a glass bottle from the beach in your example. Now comes with, uh, an ordinance violation and a fifty dollar fine.
Okay, okay. Could you? And, and that was the point that we were strongly encouraging you to.
Yes.
To establish and enforce.
Correct.
That's, I think that's all good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you keep, just keep us informed during the year, during the summer, you know, as you make little reports to us how that's going?
Okay.
You know, it's got the potential doing very, very well. Or backfiring maybe a little bit, but we'll have to see. I agree with you a hundred percent.
We, we've got four people that are returning that have done that job for the fire department. I talked with the fire chief about each of those fours. Is their top notch?
Oh, good. You got some, you got some good people.
The, uh, the new. Employees that we're bringing, that we're bringing on through the interviews and talking with them, they seem like they're gonna be. Uh, ambassadors for the town. And that they're not gonna go out heavy handed. I, I think it's, I think it's gonna work well, I'm hopeful. But I won't be shy to stand there at the end of the season and say, hey, this just didn't work. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
One of, one of the things that.
Thank you.
I saw, and I'd go to the beach a lot. I'll submit I'd go as much as anybody up here. And I've also worked beach patrol. Well. I, I actually go swimming. The, uh, and I've worked beach patrol and I'll call it under the new rules where cabanas are being put in the back. And that created a whole different complexity to code enforcement on the beach. Uh, our beach patrol and I've worked beach patrol. Your focus, my focus was on the people, on public safety, on water rescues, on, uh, jellyfish stings, on that kind of stuff. The code enforcement was, uh, I'll call it the unpleasant part of the job. And it was for me and my fellow beach patrollers because that's not what we're trained for. And very specifically, and I know a couple of the people that, uh, the chief here has now been able to, uh, recruit. And very specifically, and I know a couple of the people that, uh, the chief here has now been able to recruit, were really focused in that direction. They like rules and they like, uh, talking to people about what the rules are. I think you've got some great people there. Uh, so I think it has to do with, he always, he already talked about training and de-escalation. That was never a focus from the fire department.
Well, we, we've trained the mission, we have changed the mission.
Yes.
And the makeup based on the after-action reports that we have had, so that, that, to eliminate those issues that you're, you're addressing there.
Well, a question I have for the, for the chief, John, do you mind, or you want?
Sure, no, go ahead, get your question out.
When, uh, Chief Childress was talking about the beach patrol people, and I'm pretty sure they're gonna change their name to something, you know, like, not lifeguards, but something else, they're, they're talking about it now, to maybe even more kind of separate it from, uh, water rescue to code enforcement, to make more of a differentiation. But that's up to beach patrol and the new head of the beach patrol, um, certainly not up to town council. They're there from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM, and they don't leave the beach unless there's a storm or, you know, something comes up, and then they all evacuate back to the, to station one. If your people are there six to six, which I think is, that's a standard shift for mainland and island patrol officers, is that correct?
Correct.
Six to six. Are they on the beach the whole time, or are they, um, do they leave for lunch? Do they leave to come back to the station here? Uh, what, what is expected of them?
Last year, when there were two police officers on the beach, they did have the ability to step away and have lunch and kind of cool down and, you know, regroup, if you will. Uh, this year, when there's one, I know a couple of our beach patrollers that did it full-time, they ate on the beach. They brought their lunch with them and just kind of pulled off into the back and, uh, stayed there. So we're gonna do our best to make sure that we backfill if the person needs to come off the beach, um, because 12 hours in a police uniform, it gets, it's, it's a long day.
Well, I think we'd all understand, if something happens on the mainland or on Main Street, and the parking people need to have some support, that that needs to be a priority for the op, the uniformed officer, the sworn officer on the beach.
It is a priority. It's been my priority since day one, is that the road has to come first, and I'm not gonna leave somebody on the beach when somebody's screaming for help on the mainland.
Sure, and I don't think anybody here would expect that. The, the, the thought, or at least, I don't want to say concern, because it's not a concern, but I remember, at least I think I remember, at a prior council meeting, you were addressing the two different plans, uh, and then there was a subsequent time to that where you, the, the, the topic of how many of the community, uh, what do we call it, compliance officers?
Civilian compliance officers.
Civilian compliance, I need to write that down. And I think the last time you addressed that, you said one. In other words, a uniformed, uh, sworn officer and a citizen compliance officer. I had thought that we were looking at two, uh, compliance officers, civilian compliance officers, along with one, uh, sworn officer. And, and I looked at that very, uh, I thought that was reasonable, because in the past, there's been two uniformed officers, and obviously the compliance officers don't make the same hourly rate that the uniform, that the sworn officers do. That it would be a wash, uh, or close to a wash, uh, and that you had three vehicles, so that would work. That would concern me, I guess, and I know we use the word concerned, because you're gonna do the job, uh, and I'm sure you are. Uh, your staff is. But to have one and one, I look at that as setting up to, uh, maybe having difficulty covering the area, particularly during June, July, and August. And when we, we all heard, uh, the fire department ask for, and, and with respect to the beach patrol, a third person being allowed at a rate of $12,500 to cover the busy months. Can you address that, or can you, can I have your comments on that?
Yes, sir. We handled it, I think, quite well last year with just two. Uh, they were sworn officers with a bigger, uh, ticket price tag, if you will, uh, to the town. Doing it with two employees this year is gonna be more cost-effective, and it's gonna put a uniformed officer back on the, back on road patrol, which is a priority. Well, I've also had conversations with the fire chief, and I think I've had conversations with you personally, that I cannot have the firefighters, or whatever you want to call them, on the beach, the beach patrollers, drive by a violation that they know is a violation and not at least say something to.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't.
Because it creates a problem when two, three, uh, of the fire beach patrollers drive by a person setting up a cabana right by the pier, and by the time they set it up, and they call us, they at least call us, but they set it up, unpack all their stuff, kids are in the water, husband sits down, cracks his first beverage, and then we show up. And he says, well, three of you just drove by, and nobody said a thing, and now that I'm entirely set up, now you're gonna tell me to move? It, it looks bad, so.
I can appreciate the fact that that looks bad, and that really, I think you're making my point for me.
Yes, sir.
If you had two civilian compliance officers that, and that was their primary duty, I think that that cabana being set up by the pier would have less chance of, uh, building into a bigger problem than it should be.
Well, arguably, there's gonna be five people out there. And with the fire department offering to assist when they see problems in the making, it still gives us more eyes. You know, if, if they're stationary and they don't patrol that, uh, emergency access lane, then we'll have to do the best that we can with two, but from what I've seen, there's a lot of movement on that beach at times, you know, there's two fire chiefs out there too, and there's gonna be a captain.
Really, yes, which is good.
I mean, there's a lot of traffic on that beach for our small stretch of, of beach. And I've addressed that before too, that there are residents and visitors that say, and what's going on out here? Never seen so many vehicles on this beach strand.
Well, and, and I see people that say, boy, I like this.
I, I hear that too.
And, and I think you can make the argument, and from whatever side you, you, you choose to stand. I would like to err on the side of, uh, let's be supportive of the ordinances, uh, and be proactive. Yes, the beach patrol, or whatever they're gonna be called, has a primary responsibility and a secondary responsibility. They, their secondary responsibility certainly should be, be supportive of the police that are out doing code enforcement. But to make that a primary responsibility, because, uh, the police officer's eating lunch, or the code, the civilian is down at the west end, I think with a mixture of two civilians in one uniform, uh, I would be a lot more comfortable that it would be a more reasonable expectation that code would be followed and beach safety would be followed.
So can I sum up here? What we're talking about having on the beach is one uniformed police officer, one police department compliance, civilian compliance officer, and then three fire department beach patrol.
Yes, sir.
And that's the basic thing. And, and all of them, uh, in the course of whether it's primary or secondary, will be, uh, you know, reporting violations.
And the fire captain.
And, and the fire captain. So, you know, I, I, I think we've got a good plan to start with, and, and obviously, like everything else, we can, we can adjust. My expectation is, once, uh, the word gets out that we are actually enforcing compliance, uh, the, the amount of resistance to, to authority, if you will, will kind of diminish over time. That's my hope, and it'd be less of a hectic job for our people on the beach.
I, I think we can take the same approach, uh, Mr. Larkin, that if we come, I mean, to do it now in the 11th hour to say, all right, we're gonna add an additional compliance person, and if that's the direction council wants me to go, then we'll gladly do it. Um, I'd have to hire some more people, and I'd need another UTV to make that happen.
I, I thought there were three already, I'm, I'm sorry.
Two, two that are marked and equipped as police vehicles, and one is marked and equipped for code compliance. So I would, I, that's the, the situation I would be in.
But wouldn't the civilian be in the code compliance one? I mean, they, you would not outfit them in something that said police on it.
Correct. No, it says civilian, it's very clear that it's a civilian vehicle. The lighting has been changed, there's no blue lights on it. Um, it's.
I, I'm missing a count. Uh, you have two that are set up for police.
Correct.
A new one and the one that you're gonna replace in September.
That's correct.
Now, the Can-Am, and then a John Deere, which is set up for code.
Correct.
But that's three, and, and what I feel comfortable with is three on the beach, two civilian and one police officer. Oh, I see what you mean. You, you don't want to put a civilian in a, okay, I'm hearing you.
Right, I can't.
I'm hearing you.
And, you know, that, that, the four doors is, I'm asking to remove that at the end of this season. The way that we're gonna schedule, there's gonna be more use of the Can-Am. That's why we're gonna rotate between the four-seater and the new one, and then the civilians will drive the John Deere. And it's gonna run, it's gonna run seven days a week.
I hear, I hear that argument, and, and, and I hear that argument, and I understand your, the basis of it. I'm still reverting back to two civilian and one police officer, with the civilian code enforcement kind of working the, working the beach, and the police officer being the authority and the ticket writer. I mean, I can just see it right now, somebody is getting written a ticket, and you've got the civilian and the, and the sworn officer standing there, and down at the west end of the beach, we've got anarchy going on. And expecting the beach patrol to then divert, if you will, from their primary task to, to cover, which in certain situations is, 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 is obviously reasonable, but not as a, uh, primary plan.
I don't know what your definition of anarchy is, but.
Well, a poor choice of words.
If it's an incident that requires police, then they're gonna respond from the road. Uh, if there's a domestic, if there's a fistfight, I have no expectation for fire or for my compliance people to even approach that. They should do as any other civilian does, and observe and report.
Sure.
Call 911 on your cell phone. My expectation, and from what I understand, that the, the fire chief understood when I had the conversation with him, was if they are in transit and they see a violation, whether it be a, a cabana, a glass bottle, dog, that they at least put the thing in park and say, hey, before the cops find you, you may want to get that glass bottle out of here, and, you know, they're gonna, I'm gonna save you $50.
When I said anarchy, a poor, poor choice of words on my part. What I mean is, and I've done it, you, even if I'm just on the west end, by the time I go from one end to the other, particularly if somebody wants to know where a good Italian restaurant is, or what time is high tide, or what's the best golf course, and you spend a minute talking to them, by the time I get back to that other end, it's, the anarchy I'm talking about is four cabanas out of place, and I'm then trying to deal with those four people. And I just think that more coverage with a primary focus of being code enforcement is advantageous to peace on the beach, and I'll stop my, uh, my lobbying.
Ideally, we, the council, regardless of the membership, already went through this process and, and came up with this plan and program to, to put it into effect. And like anything else, if it doesn't work, we'll make a change.
We, we've been assigning, uh, one to the east side, one to the west side, so there shouldn't be an overlap on the same side. So you patrol to the pier, you turn around and you go back, and absolutely, I mean, I've been out there, I've covered shifts where, um, I, I make it all the way down and everything's in order, I turn around, and by the time I come back, there's four out of place.
Yeah.
If we want to prevent anything from ever being out of place, we're gonna have to position a police, or police or a compliance person at every beach access, and that's unreasonable.
And based on the numbers that we talked about, the beach control, uh, officer, as well as the compliance, and the possibility of one of the fire chiefs, you've got six people on a three-mile beach. I mean, everybody's got a half a mile look to see something and report it, I mean.
We're, we're cataloging things differently this year too, which is gonna take a little less time for us to mark, uh, a compliance or a violation, uh, so that it'll take a little less downtime in between citizen contacts.
I would, um, just, I would agree that we've got a plan together. Let's go for it and try it. But I like what Peter was talking about, but let's keep that in the back of our minds and see if it's needed. If all of it's needed, we might have to adjust, we gotta be flexible. See if this works. You okay with that, Pete? Somewhat okay with that, Pete?
We talked about a plan, I walked away from a council meeting, uh, and I think, after Mike Posdell said, oh, we're gonna have two, I think we should have two, and that's what I put in my memory bank as being the plan, not the one and one. So what happens, happens. I'm just one vote out of five. And, and it's fine, we're, we can move on. It's, I'm not gonna follow my sword here.
I said, just remember, there's citizens out there that do care in this town too. So if there's ever a big problem, I, I would hope that there'd be enough people out there to handle it till the backups arrive.
I, I've seen people as well that will stop somebody from putting a cabana in a wrong location, and because either they just got told to move, or they know the rules, and they don't want to see somebody waste all that time setting up that cabana just to be told to move when we roll by.
Good.
And that's, you know, again, that's, yeah, that's all we're asking out of the fire.
You don't tell them, you just make sure they're aware of what's going on.
Yeah. Are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Go for it.
If you recall, a few months ago, I asked for permission to apply for a grant, and that is pending, and our portion to make whole on this grant would be $86,500, should that grant be approved. Uh, what I'm asking the council to do would be to budget that money in case we're successful in obtaining that grant. That way, the money is there, and I don't have to ask for it in the middle of a budget year, depending upon how that grant goes. If that money is budgeted and I'm not successful with the grant, I would still like to move ahead with the purchase of body camera replacements. If you recall, there were two options, there was a cloud-based store, uh, storage option, and there is a server-based storage option, and the pros and cons are in the packet for you, and I'll briefly touch on those for anybody that's listening on YouTube. The server-based option is what we have now, which is an on-premise storage device, where if somebody needs, uh, somebody, when I say somebody, the DA's office, uh, needs video from an arrest that we made or a call that we have, we have to burn a disk and we have to drive it to Bolivia. With the cloud-based option, uh, anywhere with a internet connection and a secure, a, a secure way in, that data can be pulled, and it eliminates the need for us having to physically transport the video footage. If we do deliver video footage and it somehow gets misplaced, we may have to deliver it more than once. There are payment options that are also afforded to us through Motorola, which is the WatchGuard Body Camera System that we currently have, and you can see those there for the cloud-based storage option on a five-year payment plan, and then server-based option for also a five-year payment plan. Uh, if you'd like, I can break those down so that it's on the record, or what would you prefer?
Well, it looks like the, uh, cloud-based is about $170,000 for five years, and the, uh, server-based is about $110,000 roughly.
$62,000 difference.
Say what?
$62,606 difference.
Different, difference, yeah, over, over the course of five years, with the cloud-based being much more effective. So you're asking us to approve one of these two storage options in case the, uh, grant does not go through? Is, am I understanding that correctly?
I'm asking for $86,500.
Okay, that's.
And that is the portion if the grant is successful.
Okay.
Um, if it is not successful, I would still like to proceed on one of the two five-year payment plans. Ideally, this is the, uh, the cloud-based option, which would only have me spending in year one, if I do the payment program, $63,725, which, you know, would give me a surplus.
Yeah. The cloud-based option has more expenses down in year three, four, and five.
It certainly does.
That goes out there. Yeah, alright.
Alright, but you don't have to buy a server. You need to buy a server with.
I, I wouldn't need to buy a server, yes, sir.
You wouldn't, or wouldn't?
The one I have would not work for these. I'd have to buy a new server, a new transfer station.
Is that, is that it? It figures in that, uh?
That's in there. Yeah, that's in there.
Our, our discussion in the past was supporting a cloud, but cloud-based with the grant.
Yes, it was.
And, and.
Similar to what, uh, Matt Sorrells talked about with the trash cans. I need to replace these all at once. I can't piecemeal these in because the new devices won't be compatible with the in-car cameras without some uh additional equipment and that is in this this quote. Uh, similarly, I can't have some of the officers recording to the station on a server-based and another half of the officers recording to the cloud. It's just going to be a lot more seamless to do it all at once. So everybody's on the same platform, recording and storing video the same way.
Okay. I think, you know, I I would support going for the cloud-based based on all the discussion we had in the past and why we go with the cloud-based.
I think that was the consensus.
Yes.
I agree.
Yes.
I I don't know that I understand. Uh, I know you're asking for eighty six thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yes.
If the grant comes, then you can get everything because the grant would pay for the remainder of that. If the grant does not come through, in fact, when would you anticipate the grant would be um as best you can guess?
I would hope before July one.
Okay.
I have a pretty good idea.
Okay. So we would know pretty soon into the year?
I would hope so.
Uh, and it would be at that time that you would buy these cameras or are you talking about doing it on July first?
It depends when the award comes through. So if the award comes through next month, I may ask to have that money now versus waiting until July to go forward with the project.
How would we do that?
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
Which is what you're really trying
Which is what I don't want to do.
You're trying to avoid that.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, yeah. But like I said, if the if the award comes next week, I don't want to have to ask, well, can I sit on your ninety thousand dollar gift until July one? I'd rather rather not do that. Now Motorola might work with us. I might say, hey, I've got this. Can we, you know, somehow work this out so I don't have to do my share until July one? But that's all in anticipation of a successful grant award.
And then we would, you'd have like twenty grand left over, but uh then next year and the next year and the next year and the next year, we'd have more money that would have to uh be appropriated.
Correct.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yeah, we'd be locked in for uh, you know, if if we're buying it, we would be locked into a five-year commitment.
And that's reasonable.
So we all agreed cloud-based, whichever way it goes.
Okay. The next item is the purchase of a LiveScan digital fingerprint system. We currently offer fingerprinting services to the public. We also use them in-house uh for pre-employment and different security clearances that might be required. And what we do now is we ink up somebody's fingers and put those on a paper card and send either our fingerprints off to the SBI or we let uh the citizen who has paid for the service uh for our fee schedule walk out the door with a inked-up fingerprint card with our our signature on it. We have no way to tell if what we put on that card is going to be an acceptable print by the SBI. We do our best to look at it, make sure it's not smudged, make sure it's nail bed to nail bed. But sometimes what I might think with my poor vision is a good fingerprint, SBI is going to look at it and say it's garbage and they're going to kick it back. You know, and if time is of the essence, if we're trying to hire an employee, if somebody's trying to get uh employment as a as a healthcare professional, daycare professional, something they might need fingerprinted for, uh, I really don't want the embarrassment of them having to come back and say, hey, these fingerprints you rolled are no good. I need to do it again. Because it could be weeks before that response comes back. This LiveScan system also has the option to transmit electronically to um the SBI. Uh, that comes with no cost for law enforcement. Uh, but for the general public, it would come with a one-time charge of thirty-four dollars per submission. Which if we're going to offer this system to electronically transmit prints to the state, I would want to amend the fee schedule to reflect that additional cost. The LiveScan uh fingerprint device, you can see a picture of what that looks like. Uh, we would have a standalone laptop and that small cube-like device. And you can see on the screen there where you see four fingerprints circled in green. If any of those four prints were circled in red, uh, the person taking the prints would know that it's not a valid print. This system has the ability to print the card out. So if the person requesting prints, whether it be a a town employee or the general public did not want to pay the extra thirty-four dollars, we could print the card with an acceptable print and they would walk out the door with that card. And that's currently covered in our fee schedule.
And
Yes, sir.
When you're off and makes an arrest and they come in and they do their paperwork, Pete, does the person get printed here or in Bolivia?
They get printed in Bolivia and that would not change because this device does not take the prints that are required for uh an arrestable offense. So we'd still have to print them in Bolivia. Unfortunately, it's not going to save us time on the on the arrest side of it. But it's going to help us with uh what we do for pre-employment services that we offer to the public.
What's the actual price? If somebody comes in off the street and wants their fingerprint, what do you charge?
Fifteen dollars for two cards.
With no guarantee that they're acceptable?
Correct. If they come back, we would redo it at no charge, but uh yeah, when they walk out the door, there's there's no guarantee.
I mean, there's no ramifications if they say you
No, it's just time.
I lost the job because
And I've seen it happen. Um, you know, where cards have been kicked back for various reasons, just because something was illegible.
How many prints do you do a month?
Um, I don't have that number.
Just fifty, twenty, thirty?
A month. It's not quite that many.
Okay.
Yeah, I I would venture to say that that number of fifty would probably be more upwards of a year. And I think the reason that we don't do that many is because a lot of people don't want to do the snail mail method. Uh, and they would rather go somewhere that offers digital fingerprinting. We get that question from people who want to get their prints taken. If they can't have them electronically transmitted, then they're going to go somewhere else to do it.
I would think as we modernize our equipment and capabilities and services to the public, that this this would make sense.
Correct.
Yeah.
Shalom, uh, we recently got one of these devices and we've been sending employees at times there to get fingerprints just because of the the ease and the accuracy of the product.
Then we're also paying for their time to go there and come back.
We certainly are.
Yeah.
Mounce up quickly.
Well, we only need to do a thousand prints to cover the cost.
Well, there's that.
Eventually.
In twenty years.
Eventually.
I think this is a good one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's needed.
Any other questions on the fingerprint system?
No.
Next is for additional personnel. I'd like to add two full-time police officers to our staff of seventeen. We have seventeen full-time police officers. That includes me and the captain. And we have one full-time administrative assistant. We have four part-time employees and a handful of parking enforcement seasonal employees and clients employees. I think the numbers are uh around seven or eight parking and then nine or ten uh we've hired for compliance. As the fire chief alluded to in his
When you say compliance, uh, you're talking about beach?
Beach. Yes, sir.
Because you have people that work part-time for like uh the concerts uh that that uh kind of work around the different businesses to make sure that people park appropriately.
Those are our parking enforcement people, yes.
But they, you've already mentioned them in your in your account, you're having you.
Correct.
Okay.
I have. Yeah, that's part of the seven. So there are additional responsibilities for the folks that do parking uh enforcement also do uh parking lot monitoring for town events that are held at the park.
Okay.
So, so as the fire chief alluded to uh the growth and one of the things that I also want to talk about in addition to the growth and the and the demand for our services, uh, we don't respond into the ETJ uh as the fire department does with their uh fire district. But we have additional responsibilities that put us on the beach, which we have um the two additional officers that we had a few years back for parking and then we moved them to the beach. But the requirements that we have for the the events and this event's calendar was recently sent out by Ms. Amy, our new events coordinator, and highlighted in this event packet are forty-nine different events throughout the season that it's required that a police officer be at. Uh, so this is in addition to the parking lots that we need to have police officer at every single one of these events. And the expectation is that we don't cover this with overtime. I'm not going to short the road. What that means is it's either going to be me, captain, or our detective sergeant. Um, if a detective sergeant comes, it's going to end up being overtime unless we have him flex his hours to cover these additional responsibilities.
Do you think it's uh necessary to, I know the mandate, if you will, or at least this, whatever you want to call it, we have something at the park, we need to have a uniformed police officer there at the park during the start, from start to stop. Uh, do you agree with that?
You can say it.
I, you should
I don't know, I don't know that now's the appropriate time to have that conversation.
Okay.
Well, well, have you finished your explanation of these officers yet?
No, I haven't.
Could you finish that, please, and then
So
go through
What what this would do, hiring an additional two officers would be, would allow us to have four on every shift. And if you think about the things that we're doing with an officer on the beach, an officer at the events and I know we've recently had conversations about um how our shifts work and what happens when an officer makes an arrest. If I stop a car and there's a drunk driver behind the wheel, you might as well count me out for at least four to five hours by the time I do everything I have to do. And mind you, I'm not going to handle that by myself on the roadside. I'm not going to handle that by myself here. Uh, because if this person decides in their intoxicated state that they want to fight and it's just me and him in the building, I'd really like to have somebody there to make sure that things go well. So in essence, I could be taking two people off the road, which leaves one person left to respond to any other emergencies in town. So if a domestic breaks off and there's only one person, common sense would say, don't go to that by yourself. They're probably going to go. I know what I would do, but common sense says wait for backup. And now backup's coming from Oceanale Beach, coming from Brunswick County. I don't want to say State Patrol because they're they're limited too, but it could come from the State Patrol. And depending upon where that resource is, it could be a significant amount of time. You know, we we want to be, we want to be everywhere at the same time, but we just can't do it. You know, I I lost over a hundred and sixty hours of leave last year. So when you talk about how much demand is put on us to cover these things, it's immense. And I've been asking year after year for personnel. And I understand the budget. I understand the 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 not wanting to increase taxes, but if there are additional expectations, they're going to continue to be placed on the department, something's got to give. Because you you had mentioned, you know, the effect that this has on the family. You know, we 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 just took it from the fire department and put it on the police department. So my request is to have two additional officers, which would give us four on staff. We have a swing shift that we're using uh now with the with the two additional give us that that opportunity to keep the swing, you know? But what it would do is it would allow one of those officers on that shift to be assigned to these events and still have sufficient coverage on the road, still have sufficient coverage on the beach so that the strain of forty-nine events is not placed on the two of us. Right, and and we talked about that before when we had mentioned
Can you repeat what he says? Because I don't
I'm going to, yes, sir. Uh, we had talked about that previously when I had asked for additional personnel and said that we would have four people on shift. The question was, well, what are we going to do in the off-season? My explanation at that point, and I had a map to demonstrate what it would look like, um, was to put the officers in zones so that they would have a smaller patrol area, smaller area responsibility. What that tells a resident is, man, there must be fifty people working because today, in the last eight hours, I've seen that patrol car drive down my street seven times. And I never see a patrol car drive down my street seven times. But if their area of assignment shrinks and they're responsible, let's just say C Trail, if C Trail is a zone, which that's not how we have it figured out, but if it is, that officer knows for twelve hours you don't leave C Trail, how much more often will we see a police officer in C Trail? How much more often will there be traffic stops inside of C Trail, San Piper Bay, Oyster Bay? The off-season, we would break the town up into zones for that reason because we're not going to be inundated with um all the events in the park. We're not going to have an officer assigned to the beach. We try to schedule as much training as we can in the off-season. And when we do that, um, like right now, we have two officers away uh for intox training. This is the perfect time to do it if we had the extra bodies to do it. And the the personnel we have, we're able to cover very well. We do a really good job. When we start getting extra things added and life gets in the way, somebody has a baby, somebody gets hurt, somebody gets sick. I mean, it's it's a, it's a well-lubed machine until one of the gears gets damaged. And that's what, that's what we're trying to work towards. The fire department, I was, I I didn't realize they had twenty-one people. We have the same sort of responsibilities that they have. We have beach responsibilities. We have additional responsibilities in the park that they don't have and we're doing that with seventeen.
I uh There's no reason, just like with the fire chiefs, that you could give up. You shouldn't give up a hundred and sixty hours a year. Same with the captain. I'm wondering if for the concerts or any function in the park that you get officers to volunteer to work overtime. Now, concerts are covered by the town, but the market takes in money. Someone has a wedding in the park or or possibility or whoever then they should be willing to pay for it. They want to use the park, it's popular, but we can't, we can't.
Nothing I have highlighted on this list is a wedding or a baby shower. These are markets, these are town events. So it's not something we can build back. And our direction was that we do not get to use overtime for this. Which means I either pull somebody off the shift or I do it.
Or pull a part timer?
Yep, I can't get part timers to work shifts. It's problematic, um, especially in the summertime. They, every single one of my part-time people have full-time jobs.
Yeah.
Um, we're we're fortunate to have one right now that um is available to us. Um, he's got another part-time job, uh, but we're planning on using him to cover the beach as much as we can.
Can I just summarize and say, you've got seventeen people in the police department now?
That's correct.
Okay. Out of that
Does that count you in status?
It does.
Yeah. Out of that is fourteen are basically police officers available for patrol.
Correct.
Okay, that includes the sergeants, the detective sergeant and the regular patrol officers.
The detective sergeant does not patrol. So there are three out of the seventeen that are not assigned to a patrol function. The fourteen
Okay, so you're not counting the admin staff?
Correct.
Okay.
There, yes, the, in the seventeen Yes, in the seventeen, yes, there are fourteen assigned to a patrol function.
Can I come up with? But not the detective sergeant.
He's one of the three admin.
You.
I have a.
Captain.
And a detective sergeant. Okay, yeah, we have a civilian, a civilian full-time, which would put us at eighteen.
Okay, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, civilian full-time puts us at eighteen.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, seventeen sworn. Okay, I apologize for the confusion. Yeah, seventeen sworn, and then one full-time civilian.
So adding two gives you, adding two gives you four, four-person shifts essentially that that you work with on your scheduling.
That's correct.
And handles the flexibility to do this other stuff.
We're getting more and more people in town and going to require more services. As someone who spent their career in law enforcement, the protection of our office is important to me. And second to that, and a very close second, is the safety of our citizens. And we don't know what kind of people are going to be moving in here in a certain area. It's a problem more than others, but if you all are tied up dealing with arrests or at a function and a citizen calls for assistance and they have to wait for someone to come from Oceanale Beach or from the county, that's doing a disservice to our citizens. I fully support the hiring of two more officers. It only makes sense.
I I'm sitting here looking at the, and I'll have, I frankly support the two officers, but I'm looking at the fact that we, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two officers, we're going to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a, an admin, an admin for one for a HR, and then we have, we've already hired an events coordinator. You know, towns, populous safety is actually an issue. And I think we can, I support the hundred and fifty for the.
And if I may, sticker shock was, I think, part of the reason that, I don't want to speak for the council, but I'm speculating that sticker shock might have been part of the reason I've been told no in previous years. This hundred and fifty, our intention would be two of the twenty seventeen explorers that are scheduled to come offline, get another year out of them at least, and assign them to these two people. So that we're not asking for two more cars, two more radars, two more cameras, two more radios. This is just personnel cost. Because I need it that bad that we'll make do with the cars that we have. We'll stretch them out for another year or so. I don't, I don't, I'm definitely not going to put somebody in an unsafe vehicle, but if I can get more life out of them, then I'm going to do it. If if this is approved.
My my sense, if I supported this, I probably got two more years and two more budget cycles on this thing is that I wouldn't want to hear more police officers during the rest of my tenure.
I I was very hesitant to bring it this year, just because I
That's hard to guarantee.
I know the previous response.
I said, that's my sense, and I would like to.
Yeah, there's a lot of things I'd like to hear, but that doesn't mean here.
Yeah, I'd love to say that everything that I've that I've done is has been perfect and it hasn't needed to been changed, but I mean, I can't guarantee the compliance thing's going to work. You know, if I come back next year and say, well, it's not, and I got to put, it'd be best served with two officers on the beach. And I can't take the two that you're giving, if you give me two now, I can't remove those from patrol and put them on the beach.
We get an awful lot of concerns from our citizens about the services, about traffic, about congestion, about development. And and the accusation is that where the hell were you? Why aren't we proactive in making sure that we're set up, have the quality of life and the safety of life that we need? And I'm not going to mention tax rate. But it's, that's a part of this process. And it we need to think hard about what our needs are. I'll just end with that.
Well, I'll go back to something I've said almost every year is is that you look at our community, you look at the age of the people who've moved down there for the most part. And one of the key factors that I think many people have is that this town provides the police and the fire services for for security and for taking care of the people. And that's an important part of of this community and and.
I don't know what the dynamic's going to bring with a hotel. See, I don't know what the dynamic's going to bring with a top-class driving range that is similar to what Top Golf is.
But I bet you can predict.
Yeah, I I came from a community that had, it was heavy on tourism, lots of water parks, lots of hotels. And I know what it did to our call volume. We had in twenty twenty-three, just to talk about revenues, because I can't charge for my services. I mean, they're included in our taxes, but we had a net of just over fifty-one thousand dollars collected in parking fines in twenty twenty-three. There are still one hundred and twenty-five citations from twenty twenty-three that have yet to be paid. That amount goes into the general fund. That is not half of what I'm asking for, but it's, I mean, that's, that's a by us doing our job, it helps offset our budget, just a little bit.
It's difficult to go there, though.
It is. It's an unknown. But I support the the gov deals idea. I use gov deals in Ohio. I've been talking about gov deals since twenty seventeen. We'll make a lot more money back into our account by using that program.
Could you explain that? So we?
Gov deals?
Yeah.
It's what the fire chief talked about for surplus items.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I could sell this microphone on gov deals, anything that that you have that's a surplus.
And you set the price.
And and right, and then it's a bidding process, so it it meets the requirements by statute to offload government surplus items, but you reach a larger market. Anybody with an internet connection can bid.
Just like you.
They're willing to travel from California to come here and get my, there's a Dodge Ram sitting in the parking lot that's on my surplus list versus just getting people in Brunswick, New Hanover County to bid on that thing. Like I said, if somebody wants to hop on a plane and fly here to get that Dodge Ram and drive it home, they're going to pay for it.
And by the time we have an auction, it will have depreciated even more.
Correct.
Yeah. Could I just add a comment there on the fifty-one thousand dollars in in parking fines and that? We also had probably about fifty thousand dollars in cost with that program to effect, didn't we? Do you do you know off the top of your head, Lisa, what it costs to put that in effect? Buy the, buy the car, pay the people?
I don't know those numbers yet. I am getting those for you, though.
Okay.
That's true. It may be a wash, but.
I think it was close to wash. It was, it was a good wash.
It's a good wash. Yeah, it's one less thing that has to be funded.
And I would anticipate that it'll probably continue as time goes on, especially.
Yeah, we we're hopeful that we can correct people's wrongs and that they won't repeat them. But it's amazing year, week after week after week, we're writing the same tickets.
I don't particularly want to balance the budget parking fines. Just doesn't make any sense to me and if our parking plan works, there'll be less parking revenue on the beach from tickets.
If it works, yes. Yeah, but the argument for two more police officers is not tied into balancing the budget with parking fines.
I just use that as a term.
Thank you. The point I was trying to make, though, if if I could, is just that, you know, we we do our best to try to conserve money where we can. You know, I I applied for numerous grants. I've been successful with numerous grants and you know, I I don't want to just keep coming to the council and saying I need more, 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 more and not have a way on my end to say that I'm trying to be conservative. If I didn't need these things, I wouldn't ask for them.
Well, we we realize that and it's the council's job to find the money to fund the town services and like the, I don't really want to say the words tax increase. We pay a lot already, but we get a lot of services for it. Trouble is, we we don't get any funds from these huge developments around us that are causing part of our problems.
You're exactly right.
And it's going to get worse.
So so my thoughts are to include this in there for for April eighth, and that's when we actually start taking, everything is a big picture. And and that's not a final decision when it comes on April eighth. That's when we see the overall picture and kind of start making the hard choices of what we can and cannot do. And and what options we have.
Well, in the past six years, I think the council's done a good job with not increasing taxes and balancing.
Tax rates, tax rates.
Tax rates.
Tax rates. Difference.
Hopefully everyone knows what I meant. Down the station has done a good job presenting us a budget. And look at how many departments aren't asking for anything this year. And I just, I think that previous to six years where the mantra from the majority of the council was lower the tax rate, lower the tax rate, but we didn't put any money in store, Martin. I mean, there's just so many things.
We had no capital reserve fund.
I mean, I can make a, I can make a list, but right now, it's our responsibility. And I want to do the best, the best I can. Talking to you guys, I I think you have the same aim that I do is do the best we can for the town.
That's what we have to do.
And if I may, there
Carry on, sir. You got.
The question is, if the question would come up, even from the general public that might be listening or sees this later, why am I asking to replace two twenty seventeen vehicles if I'm just saying here in section number five that I'll keep those two thousand seventeen vehicles? They're on a replacement plan. And that's why I'm asking to replace them because I don't want to ask council at one time for five or six vehicles. So when they come up for replacement, we take, we pick the worst of the worst and kind of cycle them out. But they are still operational vehicles, but versus waiting and and stretching the life out of every vehicle that we have in the fleet and then coming to you in a single fiscal year and asking for ten vehicles. That's why we have a vehicle replacement plan, which I'm sure you understand that, but just for clarification.
It's only solid. It's only sound management.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the personnel?
No.
My last item is a smaller ticket. But I'm asking to fund the position for an assistant chief. This is not an additional body. It's simply to fund the position. Our assistant chief retired in twenty twenty-three. The responsibilities of that position have been shared between the captain and myself. I realize how valuable that position is in the efficient operation of the department. That position, that captain, this man sitting over here to my left is in charge of the entire operation in my absence. It it falls in line with the organizational structure of what the fire department currently has with a chief, a deputy chief, several captains, lieutenants. We have a police chief, a captain, and sergeants. I followed what's in the personnel policy to request this position. And I'm asking council for the funding of four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars.
What's the, what's the, in your, in your mind here, what's the role of the your assistant chief? Besides filling in when you're not here?
Well, he's a secondary administrator. Of course, in my absence, he would act as the chief. But the responsibilities of that position being that we're in a smaller agency are significant. And more so than it would be in a larger agency where there's chiefs and assistant chiefs, they were, which would be more administrative. But he oversees a lot of the, well, let me read for you. This is what he does in his current role. Case review, employee development, employee scheduling and leave requests, vehicle maintenance and repair scheduling, fleet management, quartermaster management, taser instructor, and compliance monitoring, firearms inventory, control and management. He assists with hiring and disciplinary disciplinary matters as needed, assists with purchasing and budget presentation, special event scheduling, internal and external employee complaint management, annual review of employee evaluations. Send a constant on-call for serious calls and cases and assume the department command in the absence of the chief of police.
That's the assistant role.
What he's currently doing as a captain.
Okay, so, so.
Which is more suited for an assistant role. Captain, a captain's position ideally is an operational commander, meaning that that person is oversees the patrol function. And he does that now, in addition to all these other mainly administrative duties.
So my question is, there was nothing in here about establishing a new captain's position. So your, your, your request here is to eliminate the captain, make him an assistant chief, and then drive on with with without putting a captain position back into place.
That is not my request. I want to, I do not want to eliminate the captain position. And I will eventually want to fill that captain position. It's either going to be through reorganization or may ask, ask for another position to fill that. It's not this budget year, though.
So you said, you said that you have a hundred and sixty hours of leave that you lost this year?
Between flex and vacation, yes.
Speaking of, and and Captain Grenade Gorgannis, how did, how did you do on that with your two jobs?
Are you hourly or are you salary right now?
Exempt, yeah.
He's salary. I'm just for the YouTube. You don't have a microphone.
Thank you.
We, we, we wear a lot of hats in in a small agency. I mean, we, we work the beach, we work the concerts, we work the special events. We cover shifts when they're needed. I do IT work. I do work on computers. Sorry, Alan. I probably don't do it as good as Alan, but we do vehicle repairs.
Sorry, he just cut your mic off.
We do a lot of, a lot of things that, you know, to keep the department running, to save costs. We have a vehicle out here that we've been piecemealing. Anytime we have something go wrong, my vehicle, for example, blew out a, I don't know what it was, two pieces blew out of the bottom of the car and I was left disabled on the side of the road. And we had an officer that was, that knows how to do that kind of work, and he removed a piece from this old vehicle we have out here to the shop and bless you, and they put it into my car. We, we wear a lot of hats, and I'm not asking for these positions to say, all right, I want to, I want to do less. But you know, there's, there's, there's a need for for these positions.
So if if Stan is is positioned or his title is changed, he would then still be doing what he's doing right now, anyway, I think is what you're saying.
Unless we're able to reorganize and have the captain assume these duties.
You're not asking for that, I'm saying right now, on day one.
But if you ask a captain to assume these duties, that means. Yeah, but if you ask a captain to assume these duties, it means you've established another position, and you have to go down and get an officer so you can go back to your four, four-man shifts.
Perhaps.
What you're saying, if perhaps, I'm going to be argumentative now.
Okay.
But, but perhaps would indicate that you think if you put another captain in there, you're not going to need four, four-man shifts. You can go back to three-man shifts. Which kind of defeats your argument for getting two officers now.
We have another administrative position now, and if we change some of the responsibilities with that position, um, I don't know how that's going to look. I haven't thought through that among this right now. Um, but that's a possibility that that could work with changing the job description for what is now a detective sergeant. Our caseload, um, is less than when I got here, and that's a good thing. Um, we're a lot more proactive. We're a lot more visible. We had two more bodies, and, you know, start putting people into zones, it's going to even, and even increase that. Uh, the amount of residential entries that we have in the off-season, what was the upper cap in twenty seventeen era? What was the highest we had? Forty-seven entries to unoccupied homes? With zero last year. Um, which, yeah, I'm, you know, tipping my hat to that. We, we, we collectively did a really good job at, uh, increasing our visibility and reducing those sort of occurrences.
Yeah.
Um, so perhaps, like I said, redefining what we're doing with that position and making that position into a captain's position. Again, when we promote internally, if someone is already in the pay range, uh, the personnel policy says that it comes with a five percent increase. So, you know, this, this is why, if, you know, and, and we're talking about the captain because he's, he's educated himself, he's went through the training, he's prepared himself for the next step in his career, and I'm hopeful that we can get there, but this is, uh, the position exists. We did not eliminate the position. It's there. I can afford it now. It's in my budget, four thousand dollars.
That's four thousand dollars for the five percent pay raise.
Correct.
Basically.
Yeah, eight hundred for the rest of this year. Or so, give or take.
You could be on town council.
Before, before taxes.
We get five hundred a quarter. So you're, you, okay, so you've come to us, and you want us to approve this. You have the money in your budget currently to make it happen.
I do.
Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with this. You, you deserve to get paid for what you do. So we can discuss this further on, uh, on the fifth.
Eight.
Eighth.
Eighth. It's not been early.
If, if it helps with the understanding of what I'd want to do if, if this promotion is made, if this happens, and how I'm going to determine the way forward with the captain's position, I, I don't want to immediately ask for additional personnel. Similar to what we're doing with the compliance officers, we're hoping that this is going to be the best thing, that it's going to work with one police officer and one compliance officer. I may come back. I'm going to reserve that right to come back and say, all right, Pete, Mr. Larkum's right. I need a second compliance officer. I also reserve the right to come back and say the compliance program isn't working at all. I need another police officer on the beach. And then Mr. Corbett's hope of not asking for any more personnel in the next two years is squashed.
Yeah.
Same way if I reassign.
Then we argue about it.
We can argue. Yeah, we will. I'm looking forward to it. But if we, if, if I reassign the duties of what is currently the detective sergeant position and make that a captain's position, or a captain detective, I, I don't know what it'll be. Um, I'm going to reserve the right again to say, that might not work. But rather than just ask for the body right now and say, give me two hundred thousand dollars so I can do this, I'd rather take a wait-and-see approach and, and see if it's going to work. See if, if, you know, what we have planned to do it the most fiscally responsible way is going to work first. But I, I'm going to reserve the right to come back and, and say, hey, we tried it. It didn't work.
Well, everything, so many changes coming so fast. Who knows what's going to happen with any department in town? What's the changes that are going to come? Well, we'll, we'll do the best we can, and.
Hey, man, hadn't got anything else. Thank you all of the department heads for coming over today, getting this information to the council. They'll take it back, soak it, study it, stay up all night and all that good stuff. And then we'll come back on the eighth and go from there. Continuation. Do we even need a motion to call? Because it's just a, but we don't need one, do we? Let's continue. It's on the eighth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ken, Stan.
Thanks, Ken. Stan, for being here.
For the rest of the department heads who are listening, thank you.